I don't either. You don't live that far away.
What?
You don't-
I stopped by to say hello.
It's a closure.
I stopped by to say hello. I'm home. What? You're good? That's good. You're good, we're good.
Nine o'clock, I'll call the meeting. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. Public- Let's pray. We come to you today asking for guidance, wisdom and support as we begin this meeting. Help us to engage a meaningful discussion, allow us to grow closer as a group and nurture the bonds of community. Few seconds for your own intentions. Uh, motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
Motion and second to approve the agenda, any discussion to that motion. All those in favor, say aye. Oh, same time, same sign. Uh, opportunity for public comment. We got a few people here have public comment, uh, uh, three minutes apiece, and if you guys would like to come to microphone.
James Jeangrass, Mead County resident. When a- when a Republican county commissioner quotes Merrick Garland to discourage taxpayers from expressing their valid concerns over election integrity, you know you're directly over to the target. We have been dismissed, ridiculed and gaslit by a commission that is truly disinterested in secure elections. One of the many questions you refuse to answer is if any of you are invested in the McCarthy Group, which leads me to believe that one or all of you are. Lawmakers wrote, "Voting machines are reportedly falling apart-" ESNS voting machines are reportedly falling apart across the country as vendors neglect to innovate and improve important voting systems, putting our elections at a voidable and increased risk. Uh, they also noted, uh, "We are particularly concerned that secretive and trouble plagued companies owned by private equity firms and responsible for manufacturing and maintaining voting machines and other election administration, administration equipment have long skimped on security in favor of convenience, leaving voting systems across the country prone to security problems." Owned by a private equity firm, ESNS has been elusive about identifying the people in its ownership. A number of ESNS executives and lobbyists have ties to election officials and politicians. The ES and ex- ESNS executive in charge of security pre- uh, previously, previously worked in the government at, as an executive at Health and Human Services before leaving. Our democracy now relies on private companies which build propo- pri- proprietary electronic systems to reliably count our votes. It seems reasonable, if not crucial, to understand who is behind these companies as a standard to ensure election integrity. Without such knowledge, we run the risk of zealots and investors with financial stakes in who went with, in fi- financial stakes in who wins our elections. Those susceptible to bribery have an incentive to be, to use subtle software programming techniques to deliberately miscount votes to guarantee an outcome in close elections. Software code that invalidates or miscounts a mere sliver of ballots can change the outcome.
All three minutes?
Dale Boose, Mead County. So as I left last week, I gave some numbers. Uh, what you're spending to ESNS versus what you could do for hand counting, and I just wanted the board, and I'll yield my time to the board on why we're spending thirty-eight thousand eight hundred so far when we could get by with between eighty-two hundred and twelve thousand, and if it does take less time, it could be forty-one hundred. I guess I'd like you to be accountable for those numbers and tell me why you're spending that.
I have not done any math on this. I'm sorry, I've been very busy with budget stuff and election stuff.
They haven't been? What, what ones? Well, what she said made absolutely no sense to what I said here. And I can prove it. Uh, my numbers are just for what you have spent to ESNS. Noth- nothing else, and that's just not even including the general, which is coming up.
And I will say that I did provide Mr. Jeangrass a, a report from expenditures from ESNS. I don't know if that's where you got your information, but I did provide numbers to James.
Uh, my, yeah, it was FOIA'd, and that's, that's where I got my information. On ESNS. And so I don't, I don't understand to get the same results, why we have to spend X amount of dollars versus this amount of dollars to get the same results. That's, that's my question. So, when do you think, you know, you know, the auditor's extremely busy. I, I, I just went down- Uh, actually, you know, that's, it's not the people that work in the precincts. You pull in a whole another set of people. So, as far as fatigue and everything, these are fresh people. Well, why do you think that is? Do they not trust the system?
Had a couple of recounts at audits, counts in the audits came out. So, in your opinion, who was wrong? The people counting the votes hand count or the machine? They both came up with it. Cause most, most of your questions have referred to that we gotta do hand counting.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, answer this briefly and then it's been time, so you did say you'd yield your time, so, if you'd answer it briefly. If you want to, if you don't want to-
Well, to me, to me, it's ironic that you have to use hand counting to prove the machine right or wrong, you know?
You don't have to.
Well, how else you gonna audit it?
Well-
We can't, you can't audit the machine. You don't have the right software to do it.
It's time. We've had, it's going on four minutes now.
I would like to hear what the commissioner had to say, if he has a response.
Hey, Commissioner Seaman, you have a response?
The reason we're auditing is because we want to help encourage west to hand count.
Mm-hmm.
We trust the machine, so we did the audit and it proved that the machine's sound is accurate.
Well-
It just takes a lot of labor out of the equation to make the-
Well, I don't-
That's all I have.
I, I asked a cybersecurity person if the auditor would have more or less workload by hand counting, and he says at least fifty percent less to hand count. All, all they have to do is line up the people. All the counting is done in the precincts. And all the, all the tallies are then transferred-
Mr. Chairman, I asked to hear from the commissioner, not Dale.
I understand, it's going back and forth, so, and, and, so we're, both of you guys got to make your point, and it's going on five minutes now, so, I'm gonna take, I'm gonna call time on this. Anybody else, three minutes?
Cindy Cook, Mead County. So, I don't know how many months ago, probably two months ago, I gave you all one of these. It was the ESNS expenditures, and you should have all looked into that, and obviously you didn't because you weren't prepared today. But I'm curious, Harry, if we had a petition into you, and you, you claimed last time you would follow the law, and yet several counties have done this, and they haven't upheld the law. Thanks to Sarah Frankenstein from Gunderson Palmer, who gets involved in the people's petitions. So I want, I found this letter from this gal from, from Watanaka. Her name's Jody Waltman. She's from McPherson County. It's one of the counties that you build big time for her services. So she writes, it's a big letter, so I'm not gonna read the whole thing, but she said just FYI, we turned in more than double the required amount of signatures in just a little over a week. Many in the county were willing to support it and willingly signed, and it says that they would be willing to work as well. So the people that are signing these petitions are wi- willing to work. That's what she found out. But anyway, she said since HB eleven forty failed, they're implementing it anyway by telling our county commissioners to, through the state's attorney and outside counsel, which would be Sarah Frankenstein. What's so funny, Dad? Oh, well, I wonder if the attorney's here. He is, yeah. And he would, he would, he always says, you know, "I'd like to refer to that and get back to you." He doesn't ever seem to have an answer in here. So he would call Sarah Frankenstein. That the, the right to reject a petition, so the commissioners, they, they tell the commissioners, you, to reject the petition. This should tell you something. We need to wake up and realize what's going on. Does make one wonder why they care so much whether we use machines or hand count or vote. I'll let you speculate on that. But here's an interesting fact to chew on. During the last election in twenty-twenty-two, the Edison Election Night reporting data showed all the candidates in the statewide races won and lost by the same percentage in every county in South Dakota. How is that possible? An algor- algorithm perhaps? This is just one of the six hundred pages of evidence compiled by citizen investigators over the last three years, which to date has been denied in court. However, the truth will come out eventually, much to the chagrin of someone who wants to protect the status quo and ignore the rot that has infested our state. What our big, what our county elected officials don't realize is they are being used as pawns in a much bigger agenda. That's what Jody writes.
Hi, Ms. Cook.
I have a comment.
Let's be brief.
Tripp County hand counted their ballots. Tripp County also had, I am talking.
Oh, I, I see that. I see that.
I would like to be able to comment when you're finished, because you didn't get the last word.
You had your time. It's my time. If you want this seat, run for it. Well, I might also add, I'm still talking. All three of you know how to run the auditor's office and how to run an election. Not one of the three of you took out a petition to run for the office. Maybe it's because you are unelectable. I am talking.
It's not, it's not our time yet. Talbot's position is not open.
I'm talking. Tripp hand counted their votes. Tripp also had a petition that voters resoundingly defeated in that election hand counting. Tripp County also found the only errors in the election returns were those, those ballots that were hand counted.
Okay.
Time, Ms. Cook. It's time, it's time.
Some of what she said was false.
Time, Ms. Cook. Time. I gave you over three minutes, Ms. Cook.
I'm here for his uncle, his uncle.
Time! It is time. Thank you. Anybody else? Nobody else want to speak in public comment? Anybody else want to speak on public comment? Move on to routine business, auditor's office. I'm gonna address one thing. I've, I've gotten some flack because of the procedure here we're taking. This is nothing new. This is nothing, absolutely nothing new. I'm simply trying to follow, LRC does this, and I think they do a very good job of it. The public has time to comment on every bill, and I believe in that. I've been down there a lot in Pierre. And then it goes back to the elected officials, and they get to make comments after that. Sometimes elected officials want to make comments, sometimes they don't, sometimes I wish they wouldn't, but it's up to that. This is, this is not a, this is not a new procedure. It, it may be new here in this room, but it's nothing new. And this is the way I want to follow it. I gotta decide, we got a lot to do today with budgets. I've been up very late looking at these budgets, trying to get cash to zero to balance this thing. It's not gonna happen this year, which is killing me as a fiscal conservative. But with that said, we're gonna pass a balanced budget today. I was up at two-thirty yesterday morning because I had to go to Aberdeen to work cattle, so I'm a little short today. But I'm just saying, this process is nothing new. In Pennington County, for instance, you have to sign a paper to get to speak, and you get three minutes. There's no interaction in those meetings. You just get to say what you want to say, and it's done. I don't want to go to that because I enjoy this dialogue. There's some things we disagree with, some things that we don't. But with that said, you guys deserve your chance to speak, and I believe I've given that to you. Limiting time is a way to prepare people when you come to this meeting. Some are better than, than others, but nothing, there's nothing new with this procedure. I'm trying to be as fair as possible, so we can get on with our meeting. Let's go to routine business. Auditor, please.
Good morning, Commissioners. Rhea Crane, auditor. For the month of August, we had Erin help with the apportioning, so we actually have two people now that are able to do apportioning in the office. Um, it was about a four hundred and twenty-some thousand dollar month for apportioning. Ninety-three thousand of that was to the county. Um, the biggest thing that has been taking place in the auditor's office besides budgets is preparing for the general election. We processed five hundred and eighty-two voter registrations in the last month, and as of yesterday afternoon, on, between Friday and uh, sometime on Saturday and Monday, we processed five hundred and sixty-one absentee ballots. So, it's been a little busy.
That's quite a few ballots. How, how much is the postage running on each ballot?
Five dollars. Five dollars to send it out, five dollars to send it back.
And that, that's also because we have so many amendments and initiatives and whatever.
It's a double-sided seventeen inch ballot. Yes. Uh, Erin has done a spectacular job getting the collections report ready, shrun and aging report, and has discovered that we actually have over two thousand accounts to turn over to collections, totaling more than two-point-six million dollars. So, um, she's continuing to work with the two, uh, collection agencies, and we will be hopefully turning some of those funds over soon. Uh, we have started working, getting our absentee, or excuse me, our election workers in place. Francie Rubel Albert starts today. She's a wonderful asset, and she, Chris has done a great job actually lining many of those up, but we have some gaps that Francie's currently working on. Uh, we have mock elections, the sixteenth and the twenty-third of October, and we're working on the PowerPoint for election school. Any questions for me?
Probably lots in, maybe an hour or so.
Very good.
But, uh, right now I think we're good. Thanks, Rhea. Uh, registered deeds. Somebody here from registered deeds office, sheriff's office.
Commissioners, good morning. Sheriff Pat West. Uh, just looking at the, uh, numbers overall this last month, deputies and dispatch calls, jail, uh, seems to be very busy. A lot of you see some of the information that we put out on Facebook. We try to keep people uh, informed on what's happening. Um, extremely busy, uh, looking specifically at the, uh, dispatch calls for service. Um, we're within about three hundred calls, uh, where we were at the end of the year last year, at the end of August, so, um, continuing, uh, to increase on those. Same with the civil paperwork is, is, um, extremely busy as well. Um-
Are these divorces, foreclosures? Wha- what are most of these civil papers on right now?
Lot of it, lot of it is, uh, evictions. Um, lot of it is, um, serving people, um, papers because they're not paying their bills. I forget the big company's name out of Minnesota, but they're just running us over with paperwork, so-
Really?
Every day we get ten to twelve in, uh, not more. So, it's, uh, definitely busy. I'm not sure what's going on. People just not paying their bills, getting in troubles, credit cards, and we end up having to serve them.
Well, the economy's rotten.
Yeah, absolutely, absolutely. Uh, the jails' numbers are on a, a little bit elevated. Um, we're about, we're running in the mid to high sixties. Um, that fluctuates quite a bit, just depending on, um, how busy, you know, things are, you know, over the weekends or whatever. So, overall going well. Um, just continue to try to, uh, find people to employ, uh, through deputies, looking to hire. We still have two positions open there and, uh, so yeah, actively searching for those, but overall seems to be going well, so.
How many people do you have left over from the rally that didn't get out? Very many?
Uh, no, no, not very many.
Good.
Uh, Caleb's done a very good job getting that flushed out, and so we're in pretty good shape with that.
Any questions for Sheriff West?
Oh, yes. Where'd you find out about the vehicle?
Oh, yeah. Um, the breakdown on the vehicle, I guess we can talk about that now. Um, let me grab, I think I got the paperwork here somewhere. Um, so, uh, we just did a cost comparison. Um, those that don't know, um, the highway patrols offered to sell their Ford interceptor that was involved in the shooting, uh, back in twenty-three. Um, they're looking at ten to twelve thousand dollars to release it, and so we did an estimate to try to figure out what the repair damage would be. Uh, estimate on the repair damage would be around, uh, fifteen thousand seven hundred. Um, and then putting the computer mounts and the computer in there along with the graphics, total for that vehicle to be up and running for patrol would be about thirty-seven thousand dollars as compared to almost high seventies, uh, even eighty thousand if we were to buy it brand new and get it all equipped.
That's a low mileage car, correct?
Yeah, it's got three thousand miles on it. It's a twenty-twenty-two, so I think we should try to take advantage of, of getting that if we can, uh-
What was the initial cost again?
Uh-
Ten to twelve.
Uh, ten to twelve for, for that vehicle, plus the up, uh, the upgrade to get it where it needs to be is around thirty-seven. Uh, ten to twelve for, for that vehicle plus the up, uh, the upgrade to get it where it needs to be is around thirty-seven.
That's the initial cost?
No, that, that's would get it on the road ready to go.
Okay, that's what the, the, the figure?
Yeah, now, brand new one obviously is pushing the, uh, mid to high seventies, so.
Yep, okay.
So, you know, I think it's a great opportunity for us to take advantage of. But we can talk more about that as, you know, later today if we need to.
I, I do think it's probably a decent price.
It's phenomenal price.
And it's got a lot of the stuff that we need in it.
Yeah, it's a phenomenal price, so it's, um, uh, yeah, it'd be good for us.
So, just so everybody knows, Pat asked for three cars next year, um, and they're roughing right around seventy-five thousand dollars to get on the road. Um, so this would likely replace us. I think you asked for four cars to be on the road.
Yeah, I actually asked for four and, yeah.
This would be something we'd have to take care of within this budget year or so.
It would be, yes, and I, I mean, I think that's probably could.
Yeah, absolutely. I'm not, I'm not trying to disagree with anything. I'm just saying it's going to be something that we'll have to handle.
I'm surprised that fifteen grand is that much to fix that. So, they're replacing the, the driver's side passenger door.
The door.
Or the backside.
The, uh, middle console in the back, plus the seats got to be replaced because of the damage in there.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, so there's some internal damage, yeah. There's some internal damage.
Are there other, um, businesses competing for that car?
Not that I know of. No, nope.
I assume they are doing this because it happened here and because it...
Yeah, yep.
The nicety that has.
We, we stored it for a year for them, you know, uh, till we got the case done, so.
Uh, any other questions, comments?
Yeah, maybe they give it to us.
Uh, we're going to go, we're still going to go with that price.
No one, nobody here from the Treasurer's Office? Uh, uh, we have a Fair Board request, uh, Jenny's here to talk to us about that.
Well, Jenny's coming up. I've had conversations with Jenny and I had encouraged her to get a bid and, you know, some bids and, and bring it here. But Jenny, uh, can you start with the amount of money you've raised for the building and then what, how the community benefits from that building, particularly if you've got some bathrooms in there?
Absolutely, yeah. Good morning, everyone. Um, our building fundraiser, um, project has been going on since about two thousand fourteen. Little background, originally our intentions were to put up a new building, um, that we could use for the community, our shooting sports program, other activities, because right now we just have a big pole barn, about a hundred and fifty by sixty, with a lean-to that, um, is just concrete. And so we wanted to continue to use that for our livestock. Um, we started the fundraising process, got some money in, COVID hit, changeover of some board members. Things just were kind of a little bit stagnant just for a year or two. Um, we got back on board, fundraised some more, got some more grants. So, we stuck a hundred and fifty thousand dollars into the fair barn and that put in heat, new lights, new, um, roll top, roll top doors, um, upgraded a little bit of the electrical, or just more not upgraded, but, um, added a little bit more in there. So, we've already stuck a hundred and fifty thousand into the building, um, which was wonderful because now we have heat so we can do shooting sports in there. Oh, I forgot to mention, we switched from a new building to taking our fair barn that we currently have and just making the updates. We could see that we were never going to be able to get a new building done, not with the cost of construction. So, we changed, um, changed the lanes and just took our fair barn that we currently had and decided to improve it. Um, so we got it ready so that we can at least do shooting sports in there. So, we have a large group that meets in there January through April. Um, we have other community events in there. Right now, the high school is using the building for their homecoming floats, keeping them stored in there. Um, we have had a few other community events. I actually had my son's graduation in there just because it was such a good facility for that. Um, last year we stuck a bunch of money into the barn to elongate it, move all of the animals outside of the barn and put all of our fair exhibits inside the barn. So, we don't use the high school anymore. So, this was the first year where we just had all of our, our county fair inside one building. Um, but we don't have bathrooms and that's a real issue for me when it comes to health and safety and sanitary issues. We have kids who are participating in a turtle race and then they go and want to, um, run our concession stands. We have a community picnic out there that can attract over three hundred people, um, just from the community out there. But again, we don't have bathrooms, so we have to have porta potties. And then we have to bring the porta potty inside the barn all winter. And it's cold in there, but it's also smelly. And so we have finally decided that we're ready for our next, um, phase to getting the bathrooms and we've got four thousand right now raised.
Do you see other community uses for that building if you had indoor restrooms? Like, I mean, what, what are some examples of?
Um, what are some other ones? I'm trying to, oh, and I just, I mean, if we got concrete in there, it would eventually be better. But we've got, um, some people who have wanted to use it for horse events. Um, FFA comes in there every year and uses it for their, um, CDE, um, competition. Um, we have had inquiries about it. We have the Art in the, um, Art in the Barn Festival in there every June. She's having to rent, um, porta potties for it. So, we're always having to rent porta potties for all of these events. And so that starts to add up just over the winter alone what we spend in the porta potties, um, and the fair. I mean, the fair alone is, you know, four hundred dollars. So, all of that starts to add up. Um, but again, for me, it comes down to that sanitary issue, um, just being able to, um, how about be a healthy environment for our, our families and our communities. Um, the bid from Rowett, fifty-four thousand, um, he did mention that this could be in phases. Um, but, um, this is three, um, bathrooms, um, where kids can go in and change. We made them large enough so that they can go in there after they show livestock and they're dirty or after washing their animals and they can go in there and change. So, um, yeah, this is my next phase for the fair barn to get bathrooms. Um, we've done a couple different little fundraisers, selling branding boards, fundraiser during the fair. Um, I'm actually catering the ag banquet next week. Um, it's the community ag appreciation banquet that we have here in Sturgis every year and so, um, 4-H is catering that. Um, so we're always working to raise money, but it's going to take us a little while to get fifty-four thousand. So, if there was anything that the, um, county commission thinks that they could contribute to that, it would be greatly appreciated.
Um, I have a few questions.
Absolutely.
First of all, I can, I can certainly see why you want facilities. Second of all, have you checked with the city planning office? Because I would assume we have to conform to their building codes for bathrooms.
Yeah, I mean, we leave that up to our contractor to, um, get the building permits and take care of that part.
But, you know, if, if the county, there's not a lot of specifics in that bid.
Well, right.
Right, right. So, I guess some of my questions is, is, and Troy is not here, so I don't know if he could help with any of it, but like trenching and stuff, if, if there's any trenching needed, et cetera, if maybe the county could help out with that. I was also wondering if, um, th- there could be a volunteer community effort with some people also helping, helping with that, you know, resupply some money.
Right, I mean, my Fair Board works out there all the time. The amount of, um, hours they put in that fair barn this year, I wish I'd have kept track of. But, um, the community, I mean, they did, they built a poultry enclosure this year, so they're doing all of that themselves. Um, because it is, like you're saying, you know, something that we have to make sure, you know, we are meeting all of the building codes and all of that. But yeah, if there's things we can do, we definitely will be...
I, I think we can work together and come up with something. That's just my personal thought.
Yeah, I mean, we, yeah, the trenching would be good. We know right where the water lines run because, I mean, we have, it's right between us and that school building, the central supply building.
I was just thinking, it's so close to the Arkham stop and stuff.
Mm-hmm.
So, Jenny, do you have, do you have any money raised at all for the bathrooms at this point?
We have four thousand right now, just because we have stuck so much into the fair barn this year.
Have you only got one bid so far?
Yes.
I would, you know, recommend getting a couple more bids.
Right.
But, um, just keep the ball rolling. Um, I'm going to make a motion that, that the county gives a one-time, uh, one-time gift of, uh, fifteen thousand towards that.
I, I first, I've got some questions before I...
Okay.
Do you have a layout design for any of this?
We do, we do, um...
And you didn't include that?
Yeah, I mean, um, yeah, we've gone out there, we've met with him, we drew, drew it out, but...
Do you have a diagram showing what's going on?
I mean, I don't have one with me.
So, what's for, what's, are you connected already out there to a sewer system?
It, that's what runs right between the fair barn and the central supply building, so it is right there next to the fair barn.
Sewer and water are running right?
Yeah, it's all Fort Meade.
Okay, so, then have you checked to see what it is to connect to the sewer system or what the cost is for that?
They have. Um, I don't, like I said, I don't have that in front of me here, but, um, it's not a huge concern because it's so close.
Well, so you got to trench it, you got to lay the pipe, you've got...
Right.
I don't know if there's a connection charge.
Right, um, I don't believe there is for that.
Hey, but you don't know?
Um, I don't have it in front of me, no.
Were those costs included in the bid?
No, they're not.
No, I'm not, it, it, the bid, the bid is really scant. I'm not sure what's in it.
I mean, I will, I apologize. I mean, I have a Fair Board that is working on a lot of this and I agreed to come and present it today. They were, they're all working and that kind of thing. And so, um, I mean, I'm involved in the process. I'm the one using the building. But the Fair Board really is definitely, um, we have a, a guy on the board who does a lot of our, um, construction part because he understands it better than I do.
So, you're, you're doing three separate independent bathrooms?
Right, there, there, it will be all one big, um, area together. The walls will be shared, but instead of having men's and women's, we decided to do three individual ones that they can go in and change. Um, they're private, they're not stalls.
A- again, there's very specific codes on bathrooms in the city. You need to get with the city and Fort Meade and then I think come back with a more complete picture.
No, I agree. I mean, I, I, we, um, I wanted to get this presented because my goal is to have bathrooms by next spring. I don't want to have another fair when it's a hundred and five degrees and porta potties and trying to change in there after I've been in the dunk tank and then I get to go change in there and, yeah, that's real fun. So...
We went just to scosh out of order. There was a motion that came on the floor. I don't, and, and these questions are fine technically. They'd have to come after a second, but, uh, um, but these are all questions we need to have answered. I don't know if, your motion's still standing, Commissioner Seaman?
Well, yeah, I mean, the bid's fifty-two thousand, so my motion was for fifteen, just to, you know, try to help out a little bit. And I understand she's got plenty of footwork and obviously this isn't her, this isn't her...
Yep, I just wanted to ask before, because we, we jumped the gun, we technically need a second to that.
Yeah, I mean, if we get a second, yeah, my motion stands.
And just to point, uh, a question for clarification, uh, uh, Ken, we, this, this, since this isn't budgeted, we technically need to make a resolution to, to cover these costs. Is that correct?
Yeah.
Okay, so the motion would be to create a resolution for one-time fee of fifteen thousand. Do I have a second to that motion?
I would second it if we had more information. I would hope that within the next month, you could come back with that additional information. So, we can get everything lined up and...
Mm-hmm.
And Ken could probably have, uh, the auditor's office, a, a, a resolution.
No, I agree.
I agree. I don't think it's dying, Jenny. I just think it's, it's, yes, we just have some more questions and I just had to ask for a second, so it's, so...
No.
So therefore, yeah, if you can get that information that we've all asked for and, and come back, I think it's a work in progress.
Okay, sounds good. Have a little plan on that.
Thanks a bunch. Uh, well, that motion was made, but it died for lack of a second. Yep. Um, let's go down to equalization. E-one, vendor refund. Are you ready to handle that, Jill or...
So, I received a request for a vendor refund for US Jag, um, that was at the Buffalo Chip. Unfortunately, he didn't submit it to me until September ninth via email. I had responded and told him that he had missed the deadline. It had to be thirty days prior to the rally or not more than ten days after the rally. He was thirty days. When he responded, he said that he had misread it, thought it was within thirty days either way, and asked if there was any kind of an exception. So, um, we put it on the agenda for your review to see how you want to move forward. Um, it does state on the vendor refund application, the thirty days prior and no, no later than ten days after, it is on the vendor application online and then it's also in the ordinance.
Any questions, comments?
You know, I read about the organization, you know, what you posted, did, did they actually sell something or were they just giving out information?
Um, as far as I know, they were selling items. Um, I didn't really pay attention when we went out for the vendor inspections as to what they were doing. I know they also had, um, a request for, uh, raffle, which is why I included all the raffle information as well, just in case you had questions on that.
Yeah, I always have questions on raffles because we never know...
Correct, yeah.
What is ever given and, and, and every group can...
Any other questions, comments?
I, I think it's a, an unfortunate thing. I mean, it, it does say on the, on the application, it does say in the... So, um, for me, it's a, it's going to be, information's there and everybody's got to follow the same rules.
Yeah, I, I'm kind of in the same spot, because the problem is next year, then, you know, how far out do you go? How many people do you let do it? Um, and, well, I, I think I'm going to step hard and fast on that.
Any questions, any more questions, comments and/or action? Going to die for lack of action, that's fine too.
I can, to make it formal, I'll make a motion.
Motion second to deny this request. Uh, any discussion to that motion? Ain't none? All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Oh, same sign. Okay, thank you, Jill. Uh, let's move down to, uh, G-one, highway. Uh, yeah, I didn't know if you could, it's just a basic, uh, just a report. I, I apologize. Uh, Rich or Ted, Liaisons, would you like to, it's just traffic count reports. Is there anything else from highway you'd like to report? This is mainly informational.
I thought the five-year was on here.
The five-year is at the hearing. Yep, yep, so we can't do that till ten o'clock.
Um, yeah, sorry. Uh, Nelson, I did talk to... Um, yeah, sorry, uh, Nelson, I did talk to Troy about the traffic counts, and, um, the way that it's noted right now, it shows the rally counts, uh, are normal counts, like, it's kinda confusing because Fort Meade Way, where it has a thousand counts a day, and then there's a rally that's got five thousand or three thousand. Um, so kinda as we go forward, those will probably drop off and be identified for those special events instead of in our normal, um, counting. Other than that, I think, uh, it's good information.
I, I agree, I think it'd be, it's good information to have some of those rally counts to give us an idea of just the volume even for a couple of weeks, because...
Oh, here's...
When you're getting that kinda, looks like Fort Meade Way combined is fifty-four, big number.
On a gravel road, that's a lot of cars.
Very big number, I don't know, yes, count, um, the thing that actually surprised me is the count on the south end of it is forty-eight twenty. Um, so it's not just people turning in off of thirty-four to the chip, that number was six thousand, so, average. Fact is, you've got forty-eight twenty people driving, pretty much probably the full expanse of that road.
And the surrounding roads was also a shock, um, you know, Avalanche and those types of things, uh, were also higher than I thought they would be as well.
Actually, I expected the Avalanche Road to be higher because of that campground up there. I, I, I was kinda surprised, you could kinda, you could kinda tell who gets the most campers by some of this. I also think since the rally seems to be starting earlier and earlier, we almost need to get our counters out, maybe even a few days prior. Um, but, uh, there wasn't a lot of variation between twenty-four and twenty-three, which kind of, uh... I'm just amazed that many vehicles have gone on that gravel road.
If, if you're in a spot, I see you're back there shuffling papers, probably getting ready for your hearing, but... And this isn't on the five-year plan, we're just discussing the highway report right now, yeah. Yeah, okay, yep.
You know, the present, thanks.
Uh, just, yeah, there's just making comments on your, uh, on your basic report. I guess I'd like to point out, Troy and, and crew, and, and they're, they've hauled a lot of gravel this year. Hundred and eleven thousand tons of gravel, I just got that report last week. Areas all over the county, which, uh, we all appreciate, that's, 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 like I said, it takes team. Um, you guys, you got a pretty good team going.
Yeah, they're doing a great job.
We, we really appreciate that, so, um, yeah, you guys have been very busy.
You know, one thing that I was wondering, how come there's like almost a twenty percent variation between the DOT numbers and ours? Do you think they, they use the old rubber ones, right, and we're using digital?
I don't, I, I've seen them use the rubber ones, I'm not sure what they were using, you know, on the same, same roads that we were, I guess, I didn't really notice what they were doing, so... Not sure why the numbers are different or whatever either, um, maybe they do count? I don't know how the sensors actually, you know, work or whatnot, so... It has to do with trailers, I, I'm not exactly sure, but it's a good question, twenty percent's quite a bit.
I was thinking they switched to, uh, the cameras.
I, I didn't see any tubes on our roads during the rally.
I thought they switched to the mild vision cameras.
But I've seen some on Elk Creek last week that were the tube ones, and, but I'm like, I don't know why they're, I guess they probably have a right or wanna know what traffic is too, so...
Any other questions, comments on the, on this traffic count analysis report?
How did the road hold up?
Very well, we haven't touched it since, I mean, we're, we're in the process of working on it right now, the rest of Fort Meade Way before winter, um, doing the base stabilization and gravel work, but it held up very well throughout all the, the rally. Like I said, we didn't have to go and patch it up during the rally or anything like the previous year, so...
So Troy, can you tell us, tell everybody what you did different this year on the Fort Meade Way versus this year's?
Sure, um, I guess, starting from the interstate, we did, we re-gravelled Pleasant Valley Drive from the off-ramp to Fort Meade Way with, you know, we put new gravel on it and base stabilization. And then, two miles, uh, south of two oh seventh, we did base stabilization and gravel there as well, past, just past Cattail Place, so now the north three miles are done, and then, uh, two Fort Meade Ways done, so we have the three miles left which we're working on now.
And so essentially, you know, we've, we've really tried to put some effort into, uh, keeping that road together with the higher traffic, um, some of this is, um, you know, test sections, we've done test sections across the county. This was one that we tried, uh, and it seems to be working very well for the high traffic. Uh, does cost a little bit more, but, uh, like you mentioned, we haven't had it laid out there, so I don't know if it costs us anymore.
Right, and the, the three miles that are left, we did mag water that for the rally to help it hold together, but, I mean, it's, it's obvious the difference, of course, there's not as much gravel on those three miles, so... Not exactly apples to apples, but, um, you know, that three miles got pretty rough, and it needs work right now, and that's why we're doing it. So, I mean, the base stabilization is fine, like, we don't have to reapply anything to it, we can still rework it and pack it back down, and it's good, we don't have to add any more product, so it's just literally blading in water. So, that's the benefit of what we're doing.
Good.
So, I was just looking at these traffic counts, you know, six thousand a day on the north part of Fort Meade Way during the rally. Obviously, most of the traffic is campground-related, rally-related. Is there any way that we can cover parts of that cost? I mean, is, is there some way we can look into that? Because we've got the Meade County residents that are paying for the cost of, you know, some of these campgrounds are making buku bucks, and they're not contributing anything to the road other than what they pay in, pay in property taxes. And so the rest of the county are supporting, supporting all the cost. I don't know if Ken's listening, I, I don't know if there's, I think we should do a study, and, I mean, I just went through Denver, and for a, for a bypass road there, you know, they're gonna send me a bill for, for taking the toll road through Denver.
Right, right, yeah, I don't know, that'd be great, I'd love to figure out a way to, you know, help them pay for the extra work that causes us, but...
We, I mean, the county residents have spent a lot of money for that road. We spend a lot of money every year, and we're really not recovering any cost on it.
I mean, some of the campgrounds have paid for sections of mag, like, beyond what their just, their driveway is, but they're using the whole mile row, I mean, they're using more than the mile, so I guess paying for it is what every other resident does for theirsel- themselves as well, so...
You know, I looked up, and maybe Ria could look up while I'm talking to just correct me, but it seemed to me like the taxes for that one major campground out there was like around forty-five thousand a year, of which county got about a third. When you, when you think about how much effort and roads and police, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, that's, they get a pretty good bang for their buck.
Only we could do a sales tax to the rally.
If we could only do an event tax, and somebody said that concerts are sold as camping, and it has a different sales tax on it? I don't know, I'm not a sales tax expert.
Yeah, I mean, people talked about anywhere around Sturgis, all of our gravel roads, that, obviously, the traffic increased during that time, so, I mean, people are coming and going all over, and it's not just paved roads.
I, I thought one of the interesting things on your numbers was, uh, Van Acker Canyon had as much traffic as Fort Meade Way.
Oh, that didn't surprise me.
But, I mean, it's a, it's an interesting, uh...
Scenic drive.
Thing for everybody to know, that, that, that one gravel road carries as much as Van Acker Canyon.
Yeah.
During that time.
Any other questions, comments on this highway?
I think this, I think that was the state grant that got that Van Acker Canyon road done, way back when.
I think so, there are actually some federal money on that.
Well, yeah, state gets most of their money from the feds, yeah.
Um, so, I was gonna ask, uh, Seaman, so are you, are you asking the state's attorney to take a look to see if you can even do toll roads, or, I don't even know if you can, it's out, but I'm not familiar with it.
Well, I'm just looking for ideas to see if there's some, some kind of a way, I mean...
I mean, there are haul road agreements, but I don't know how you can, I don't know, correlate the two, I guess, if that, not sure.
I mean, it's frustrating that, you know, we host this rally, and we're paying to, for the use of a lot of our roads, the state's collecting, I don't know how many cents a gallon for gas taxes, obviously, all these people are spending a lot of money on gas, the state's reaping a huge benefit, and we're getting stuck with a lot of costs for roads and law enforcement.
Well, and then the state will issue a, a, a press release saying a million dollars plus was collected in sales tax, and everybody thinks that means the city of Sturgis gets all that sales tax money, and yet it goes throughout the entire Black Hills, and the state gets most of it. We also have a problem out there, if you read Facebook during the rally, which I kind of monitor Facebook a little bit, there were extreme problems out there after those concerts with traffic and problems, and talk some to the sheriff, he's gonna talk to the owners out there too, but it's a definite traffic issue. Did, did you see traffic backed up onto Alcoy Road much during the rally, since you have kind of a front row seat?
Yeah, I mean, there's always, uh, congestion at all the intersections, basically, and, um, yeah, even the year before, we were, had, had to do some patching or try to work out there, and, I mean, we couldn't even slow traffic down, they would just go right around us, they'd take the ditch, I mean, they'd go around left side, right, any which way they could, I mean, a bus almost flipped over going through the ditch.
A bus went through the ditch too?
Yep, part of the bus. But yeah, I, I mean, it's crazy, and yeah, right in front of our shop, we can't even work, really. I mean, we have to leave town ourselves to do anything, cause you can't get in and out, like during, you know, certain morning and evenings, I mean, it's obviously the busiest times, middle of the day will be okay, but yeah.
Well, I, I worked in Sturgis during the rallies before Fort Meade Way was built, and the state's highways couldn't handle the traffic through Sturgis. So, they haven't offered a dime, cause we built the bypass, you know, they, they've just stuck us with all the expense, and we're actually doing them a huge benefit, because you couldn't get through Sturgis, and you, the bikes were lined up for miles trying to get from east in, in through Sturgis to get into the hills.
Mm-hmm.
I, you know, I'm, I'm just extremely frustrated that, that we can't come up with some kind of a solution to get some help with the cost of that road, particularly Fort Meade Way.
Maybe we'll install culvers next year in August.
Yeah, well, the one thing I'd say about traffic backed up after a big event, that's true, and uh, major metropolitan areas, that's true, even in, um, you know, I was at the SDSU game here a couple of weeks ago, it's true, when that game gets over, it's just, you know, those, we're never gonna build roads to, to accept all that traffic to move smoothly, and I'm, I'm not inclined to upgrade those roads, so, the people leaving the concerts feel like they've got some kind of great way out of there, I mean, they're, they're just gonna be...
Oh, no, I'm not in favor of any county expense towards that, but in the past, they used, the campground owner used to send staff to a, got some sort of a flagging school.
Yeah.
And they had to be certified, and they had to be out there, and they had to be directing, and, you know, they coordinated, you know, with, with the sheriff's department, I believe, I mean, cause you just can't have anybody out there. But, um, I, I haven't seen any certification or information from them on that. And apparently, you know, there's some accidents and other things that have happened out there.
Yeah, I know they've added entrances and tried to make it better, and I think it probably has improved, no doubt, but yeah, it, there's just times where it is backed up, people pulling in with, you know, fifth wheel campers, and it's a tight little corner, so it's slow going.
Okay, that's all good discussion, and, and it sounds like, uh, I'm Black Hills Pioneer's here, so I can see the headlines, Meade County Tampa Net Toll Roads.
Don't, don't write it for them.
Not yet.
But after that, let's do it on the interstate.
Yeah, uh, we need to get moving on to our ten o'clock hearings, though, so, um, thanks Troy, you'll, you'll be up in just a little bit, so let's, let's go to them, we're moving a portion of section line right away, comment to section nineteen twenty, twenty-nine, thirty, section five north, range six east. Ms. Vega, if you'd wanna identify yourself and just give us a brief overview, please?
I know I do, it's, it's bad. So Brandon and Jessica Lindley are petitioning to open a section line to improve it, to a road, twenty-eight foot wide road. Um, this is a continuation from the last meeting, um, the plans have been revised, reviewed and revised, um, put, um, the drainage easements and the, uh, construction easements also have been edited. Um, we'll just hopefully move forward with the project and get it built, and then close it out afterwards. Where we're at, um, it's still in the same location as before, coming off of Fort Meade Way, running east to Lindley's property, um, we did change out, the cul-de-sac is now, we did have a hammerhead-type cul-de-sac before, we do, we have a sixty, a sixty-five foot radius cul-de-sac now. Slopes on the road have been adjusted to meet our ordinances. Other than that, everything that we have addressed has been, um, I know Talbot and I kind of spoke about the drainage easements, a little bit more work on the front-end language, on the grantor grantees, um, be a grantee on those easements, but ACE's, ACE's engineering has done what they were supposed to.
Sharon Vazanas, do you have anything to add?
Um, Shannon Boston, baseline surveying, um, no, really, I don't have anything to add, um, just I think, I think we met all the conditions that were requested by last time, other than it sounds like just a couple little edits on the easement, so, which I easily change, and then I can gather all the necessary signatures for that, so...
Are the Lindleys here?
They are not, nope.
Uh, is there anybody else that would, from the public that would like to speak to this? Is there anybody else in public that would like to speak to this? I'm not seeing anybody else in public that would like to speak to this, so I'm gonna close public testimony on this agenda item.
So, um, what Tanya was alluding to, I've looked at the easements, I don't find them acceptable, um, first of all, some of the easements don't include the county on the cul-de-sac, and, and I understand they think that's a temporary, I don't know that's gonna be temporary, uh, it could end up to be a long-term cul-de-sac at the turnaround point that the county should have the rights for the entire area. Also, the other drainage easements grant the easement to the Meade County employees and the Meade County equipment.
Hmm.
Um, they're, they're really poorly, poorly, poorly drafted, um, that needs to be changed in fact that the county, the county that has the right, not the county employees, or the county equipment. Um, so, uh, I, you know, I know I, I raise these, I raise the issues on the easement simply because it doesn't do us any good to build a road and not have these easements, but the landowner does, or some, some landowner does, because we gotta look to the future if the county ever has to do any maintenance out there. Uh, but we need to get the county clean on these easements. And I'm assuming these easements provide enough width to actually make them useful. I, I don't know how that was determined, but, as I see that they're fifty feet wide?
That's on a four to one, three to one slope going down, is that right?
Um, four to one, yep. Um, four to one, yep.
I haven't seen any plan.
Oh. Yeah, cause usually around drainage culverts, that tends to be a steeper part of the road. But, um...
I looked at some of that as well and it, it, yeah, it, it's going to be tough for me to vote for it, uh, without those changes made in, in those easements. Um, so this is a continued hearing, we've continued this for about a month now. Um, with that said, I don't know any other way than to continue it again unless someone wants to make a motion to pass it, but, um, uh, to make sure this language within those easements are, are correct, is that what you'd recommend, Commissioner Wazanas?
Uh, yeah, I, I don't, um, yeah, I guess, I don't...
Was Troy still around?
I mean Troy, I'm assuming you've looked at these drainage easement areas and you're finding that you're gonna have enough room to work on these if you need to, or?
I mean, I've looked at it, but, um, I guess until I see the, the final drawings and know exactly how much room that is, I mean...
But there's drawings attached to these easements, so, I, I mean, I mean...
Yeah, I mean, we, we should be able to work, clean out culverts within that area, I mean, I wouldn't wanna be installing them in that area, but that's not our, our deal, but to clean them, that'd be fine.
Well, if it was a failed culvert.
Yeah, then if we have to go back.
We'd have to replace, not, we're not taking that road, but if it was a county road, um, then we would have a fifty-foot easement. Good, I mean, I think it's fine, some of our, I think all of our county roads are sixty-six feet wide now.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so fifty foot good, enough, uh, on the, the intersections.
Yeah, I think so.
Okay, which I'm fine with, I think the assumption I always make is fifty years from now.
Right.
Cause your predecessors are have to be maintaining this road. Um, and we're trying to plan long-term.
Mm-hmm.
Because I don't wanna be back in those situations where
Well, yeah, I guess it's...
They didn't think about, what, you know, it's easy to say we're just gonna wash our hands of it, but...
Yeah, well, when you put it in those terms, yeah, it's six, I mean, I'd like it as much as I possibly could, you know?
So...
Well, and really, I mean, it's not, Shannon, we're not, we're not saying we wanna take the land, we're, we're how can we do this so everybody can make it work?
Well, I mean, if it's fifty and fifty is workable, fine, I mean, that what I, I mean, if you, if you needed more, if it had to be more, I mean, probably, you're probably gonna be able to figure it out with the landowner a couple of feet off, but, but, um, but the easements are my, the language in the easements, my big issue. I don't know enough to say, I guess, you know, Richie made a good point, where our roads are sixty-six foot, so be fifty.
I think fifty is workable, uh, I agree that the access that's allowed in there is...
Shannon, I got a question, there's a, there's a construction easement map, but there's nothing that really says what that's there, there, I don't see that's really tied to an easement. I'm assuming that's the construction easement that the, that Lindleys are getting to build this?
Yeah, that's correct, that's a, it's a temporary construction easement. So then, once everything's built and completed, everything's put back to normal, that easement goes away.
Yeah, I, I don't, I, I just, because it just kind of falls in there at the end, I didn't know with no document explaining, it's not supposed to be attached to any of the easements, like, the way I understand.
No, and we do have, which we can share with the county, we'll have signed temporary construction easements also. We, those won't get filed, but they'll be, we will have those in place, so.
Right, um... Yeah, so I, that's, I'm, construction easement doesn't bother me, it would be, people building it, that's for the initial build. I don't think the county, it would be appropriate for the county to think those easements is the drainage.
Rainage, in, in the language within that easement.
Yeah, well, yeah, I mean...
Yep, obviously.
I mean, I, I raised it before and then the language inserted doesn't make...
So is there a way to, uh, change it, there, there wouldn't be, I mean, we could change it to that would satisfy you, that we could get something going today, or it's, it's, it's gonna be pretty tough, I would say.
Well, I, I think that was the request last time, was to have those updated with Ken.
And they were, yes.
Is, what's the one? We had not have the current ones online, then?
They're online. Current ones on our line, I just didn't have any exhibit maps, cause they're from the last meeting before. Yes, the current ones were unloaded to board docks.
Okay, cause of, I'm looking at page fifteen.
Oh, unplugged, yeah.
Which would be...
Oh, unplugged, yep.
Yeah, it's exhibit A, which would be the north, uh, major drainage easements. Still says on mine, it says it's to Brandon Lind, uh, Lindley.
Yeah, so what they did, um, if you look at it, um, you're looking at the, you're just looking at the diagram?
No, the agreement down below, it says the owners described, uh, go up a little bit, right there, it says agreement. We, the owners described property, agreed to allow Brandon Lindley utilize the area described as, on the exhibit as a permanent drainage easement. So, to me, that, that doesn't give anybody else but him the authority to be in that.
But it's the language in the document that's attached to that. That's where, that's where we're trying to give the county and everybody that agreement. Of course, and then the county wouldn't have to sign anything, cause at this time, the county's not, they have no obligation for anything.
Yeah.
No cost or maintenance or nothing, so, but within the language of that agreement, the intent was to allow in the future, the county or whoever, if, say Lindley or whoever's responsible for the maintenance of this road doesn't do it, somebody else could do that, send them the, you know what I mean, for the cost to do it, so...
The way I read it, it says Mead County employees and vehicle equipment will have the right, it doesn't say anything about the easement, I'm not an attorney, so I don't know what that, I guess if that, that means what that means.
It seems like the exhibit should also carry the same language as the...
It, it seems like easement should be granted.
Yeah, I think that's...
I think the wording's funny in the document.
Yeah, that's a, a good point, Rich, I was sometimes... The document's a bit, um, the, the document language is just pretty, um, um...
Well, it's evident that many things need to be changed.
I'd like some direction on exactly how to do that, cause I tried to do that last time and
Well, maybe it's...
Ran it through Mead County and it didn't, obviously, it's not satisfactory, so...
Want to say something?
No, that's fine, I'm, I can...
Um, I have a question, would it be possible to combine those two on the right into one easement? There's not that piece in between that we're not allowed to occupy in case of a maintenance or anything like that? I don't know what that distance is in between there, but...
Seventy feet, sixteen, sixty-nine feet.
But, no, between the two culverts, coming out, that area, that, just make that one big access easement.
Is that right? Cause it looks like it's, it says sixty-nine, sixty-six, but it's
But they're only fifty feet wide, yeah. That, that doesn't seem to be, that's what they...
You see that, Shannon?
Where is that?
The two on this end, the distance between, the bearing distance is sixty-nine, sixty-six.
Oh, right, right.
But that seems shorter than the distance, the fifty feet.
The fifty and fifty, yep, no.
I don't think that's right.
Any other questions, comments? Uh, I, I, I guess as far as direction, I think it was, the request was that, there was a couple requests on this, but, uh, I think the main one, uh, we were asked to have an easement for, uh, before approval, and I don't know as if these document, I guess, like, again, I'm not an attorney, so I, I but I don't know if this is granting us that.
The, the, the first two easements don't grant the county anything for the cul-de-sac. Second one, the second two grant Mead County employees, which I don't know what that hell, I don't know what that means, you grant it to the entity.
Sure.
Um, um, and then that's employees and it's equipment, I mean, if you grant, if you grant an easement, you grant it for the purpose of if I grant you an easement for a road, it's implied that you can actually build the road. Or if I grant you an easement for drainage, that you can maintain the drainage, um, so, um...
So basically, it's not granting an easement.
Well, I, I, I mean, it looks like, yeah, I, I don't... I mean, quite frankly, uh, this drove a conversation between Tanya and I, that county should probably just develop a required language easement that people have to give us when we're in these things, so, uh, Shannon doesn't have to try to guess, or Shannon's engineer doesn't have to try to be a lawyer to draft it, um, and that we can get these things kind of more standardized. Um, so, we, we, we're not thrashing this through during meetings. We just have a standard form, subject to deviation for special circumstances, is what I would say. And Troy knows exactly what he needs and we all have that. And everybody walks in the, walks into, when we're, you know, Shannon, six months ago, to know what the county would be asking for. So, um, um...
Can I, can I ask, Ken, what should this say?
Drafting is always problematic, um, you know, as Gary said, he's not a lawyer, but you get two lawyers in a room and you're gonna get two different interpretations. I agree, standardized is the best. I mean, we have that with construction agreements, when we get, uh, easements for doing the construction, we have standard language on that. And I think we should work towards that, um, at this point. I agree that, uh, county employees is a little too specific and the grant should be to the county generally. Um, that, uh, is the way, like utility easements are, it's, it's granting to Black Hills Power the right to, you know, enter and do their thing. Um, so there, there's some work that can still be done and I do think we should work towards the standardized.
Right, so, I mean, if I was gonna make a motion to approve this today and I tell Shannon what to put in that, what should I tell him to put in that?
I would suggest that you don't.
Okay.
Tell him what to put in there. If we don't have standardized that we're requiring, we should not be giving legal advice to Shannon as to what he needs to draft or not draft. Cause it's, it's, you know, he, he's, he's representing his clients, the county is not.
Sure, and, and that, I, I get that, but I don't like, I, I hate to have him come back every month saying, oh, what, well, that wasn't right. What's the next one that I can throw in?
Well...
That, that's my issue.
Can you work with Tanya and get that language? Standard form for the language that needs to be put into those areas? And also send it out to the commission, particularly Talbot, and make sure that it covers what it is to cover.
And I think it, you know, be used or looked at mostly by the planning board, too.
Right.
So, I think that is something Tanya and I can work on.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, but I, look, here's a problem, I, it might take us a while to work up standard language, we should probably try to work some language here. Tell you what, uh, we continue this, um, Shannon, if you'll send me the documents and word as a commissioner, I would give recommended language.
Okay. Okay, thanks, uh, can I get, uh, any other questions, comments, interaction, uh? Approve, deny, or continue?
I'll make a motion to continue.
So, one question I've got, you pointed out the sixty-six, sixty-nine, which doesn't look right, if you'll double check that and then see if the grantor would have an issue with that, that area between those two, cause it's only like thirty or forty feet. So, it's all part of one big access.
Yeah, I, I, we can make that correction, too, so, I'm sure they're gonna be fine with it, so...
Thanks, Sam.
Hey, we have a motion to continue this hearing, uh, I need a second.
Second.
To our next meeting, which is October, October eighth, I assume, at ten o'clock?
Yeah.
Okay, uh, motion second on the floor to continue this hearing, any discussion to that motion? Saying none, all those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Oh, same sign. Thank you, guys, uh, brings up, uh, item D two, public hearing of vacate sixty-six foot section line, common sections, sections twenty-nine and thirty, township range five north. Um, Ms. Vega, do you wanna give us a overview, please?
Um, sure, so this is a continuation also from prior, um, planning board has approved the final plat. It was, if you scroll down, the minutes are on, oops, too far, yeah? Um, it was not unanimous vote, um, Bob, Mr. Burns was a nay on the final plat, but it is an acceptable plat, um, that was the condition that the plat go through planning board as a final, and it has, he has signed the plat, taxes are paid. It is in the format that was requested from you folks, so we're asking for a continuation to approve the section line vacate.
What you'd be looking for is picking to vacate the sixty-six foot section line on the filing of the plat.
Yes.
That what the request is, Shannon?
Yes, exactly.
Uh, there's, there is additional right-of-way.
Well, yeah, the, but that, that's part of the plat.
Okay, okay, thank you. Uh, Mr. Vazanas, you have anything to add to that?
No, I don't, no.
Hey, is there anybody from the public that would like to speak to this, say, uh, and up before, we've had some proponents and opponents to this, uh, is there any proponents that would like to speak towards this at this time? Any proponents that would like to speak to this vacation? I'm not seeing any proponents like to speak to this vacation, any opponents to this vacation? Any opponents to this vacation? Anybody else in the public wanna say, I don't care? Okay, and I will, it doesn't look like anyone's coming forward, so I'm gonna close public testimony to this, is there any questions, comments from the commission?
I'll make a motion to vacate the section line upon the filing of the plat banning Fort Meadway and adding right-of-way to access Comas property.
Ralph's Way, right?
Yes, the extension of Ralph's Way to the...
I'll second that.
And you said the plat included the, uh, um, going to a hundred and ten foot, I believe, on Long Fort Meadway, is that, that's correct?
One twenty on that side, I believe.
Two one, it's one ten, we're still ten foot short, we haven't done the...
Yeah, we're adding an extra ten, right, yeah.
I apologize, yeah, I apologize, I went on, or, uh, we have a motion and a second on the floor to approve this vacation upon those conditions, did the secretary get that in the...
Make a motion to approve the vacation of the section line upon the filing of the plat dedicating an additional ten feet to Fort Meadway and dedicating sixty-six feet Ralph's Way on the east side of Fort Meadway to the Comas property, to the Comas property, correct, Shannon?
Correct, yep.
Into the Comas property. It goes into the Comas property.
Yeah, cause we did go sixty-six feet with it, yeah, into the Comas property.
Motion and a second, I was gonna have her type it up for up there. Uh, motion and a second on the floor, is there any discussions to that motion? Saying none, I'm gonna call for electronic vote, so we can see the, I'd like to see this motion, so we get it straight.
Pressure.
Yep. I will call for the vote.
We had quite a discussion about this the first time.
Yeah.
Nathan, I'm surprised to see you here, it's been a long time.
He's presenting today.
Hmm.
Fort Meade Way, huh?
Oh, yeah. That's my typo.
(laughing)
I do kinda think we should have a name called, a road called Foot Meade Way now.
I do, too.
I'm gonna advocate for that. You see where they're looking? Oh, it hasn't popped back up, so. At least correct it in a minute.
I voted on the foot.
Yeah, we all did.
Okay, okay, okay.
It will be corrected.
I think that should be a shared use path somewhere.
A shared use, yeah, there you go, it's- it's- it's the walking path.
The walking path, not along that road.
Yes.
I haven't, the results have not popped up yet. Motion carries, uh, three to two. Thank you.
Thank you.
Brings us down to the highway department, five-year plan. You brought muscle with you today.
Yep, I thought I should have some help here.
Okay, good. Uh, if you'd like to go ahead and- and brief us on this five-year plan?
Sure, this is, uh-
Please just identify yourself for people listening.
Troy Eastman, Highway Superintendent.
Nathan Jagum, Assistant Highway Superintendent. I haven't used these new mics yet.
The light looks like they're on, but they're not.
Oh, now, right?
Yep, Nathan Jagum, uh, Assistant Highway Superintendent from Meade County.
Hey, this is our annual update to our five-year plan, this is, you know, kind of a wish list in a- in a way, not everything on here gets done, but, um, you know, it's a start, it's like what we'd like to do, if it all works out, but, um, yeah.
And, uh, kind of a caveat to that is if it's not on the list, uh, then it's, we can't get funding from the feds or the state on that, so, has to be on the list, that's why sometimes this list looks a little bit bigger than, uh, what we can really chew, but, uh, we can also modify the list anytime during the year, so, formality.
Which we do frequently.
It's a formality.
So, yeah, we list all the projects by year, just kind of, you know, try to anticipate the best that we can, um, funding doesn't always come through in that exact calendar year, it's not really, you know, in our control sometimes, so, um, subject to change, I guess. But, yeah, there's a list of each- each of the projects that are potentially what we identify as important right now, anyway.
Jagum, you have anything to add?
No, the only thing, like, uh, Rich said on the formality side, if anybody is here in attendance for the five-year plan, please sign in, um, in the sign- on the sign-up sheet for the DOT five-year plan in the back, and then also if there's any comments there, I'll do my best to capture any comments that we also have to include, um, statutorily for the- this- this stuff for the- the state, you know, for eligibility for grants, that's why, yeah, I just wanna make sure we get everything captured and get it submitted properly to the state, so, um, I don't have any additions besides what's already on here.
Certainly, okay, thank you, and you do a good job of replying to emails, so, that's good.
Nathan, what do you want people to do if you're here, even just to listen to it, sign in, even if you're not gonna make comments?
Absolutely, yep, and if you have any comments, um, I will fix them or get with them to make sure we capture it properly as well.
Yeah, so, the paper should be in the, is in the back.
In the back.
Back on the table, so if anybody's here just even to listen on the five-year plan, we'd ask that you sign it. It's some of the data the state needs to collect to help us with the funding.
That includes commissioners.
Yeah.
It's- it does actually say, besides just commissioners, they want, um, the public who's involved as well, so are here for the five-year plan.
Thank you, so, yeah, any-
Pressed to.
Is any, is there anybody here that wants to speak towards this plan? If you'd come in the microphone, please, and identify yourself?
There you go.
Have a seat.
Not gonna stay long.
(laughing) Oh, but it's a, it's a hot seat.
Yeah, um, I'm Patty Dale, and I just wanna know if there's a spot where we can access this online?
On the agenda today.
Like, all the projects?
Everything that's-
I just have this.
Yeah.
It comes up as an attachment on there, so if you-
If you go on- if you go online to the, to our website, Meade County, I just type in Meade County S D, uh, that'll get you to our website, and if you get to our agenda, um, it's, it'll be on there, on an attachment form.
Okay.
Left-hand side, those little folders.
Or if you give me your email, I'll-
And if you need help, yeah, I'm sure Nate would be happy to help you get to it.
Yep.
It's, it's hundreds of pages on it.
Oh, great. (laughing) I'm just gonna skim it, okay?
No, that's fine, thank you.
Okay.
Just write that, you can write it down.
Anybody here like to speak to this? Yes, ma'am. Yeah, yep, yep, uh, I guess, uh, Troy, if you'd like, give up your seat for a second?
You know, mine.
Okay, I guess we have a spot.
And state your name, please.
Jessie Beeson, so, my comment is you guys have put Avalanche Road on here like every year predicting that it's gonna be done and it keeps getting pushed back, so is it actually going to be done this year?
Um, we're in process of, you know, talking about it, it's a city and a county road at the same time, so there's-
Right.
You know, a few mu- moving parts there.
Yep.
And this year, like, twenty-twenty-four, or are you talking in the future?
Any- any time, right?
Yeah, cause-
Is that just all this?
Any time within this century, I think, is what she's about.
Yeah, pretty much. Like, in my lifetime, is it ever gonna be done, or are you just gonna just keep throwing more gravel at it?
Well, for now, we'll have to throw more gravel at it because we don't have the funding, like, this year or next year, I mean, we have other projects that, you know, were started beforehand, so.
Right, and I understand prices went up, a lot of development happened, prices went up, so, that being said, though, I just keep seeing this road and it keeps coming up, like, it's gonna be done within the next three years, and then that keeps getting pushed back, and pushed back, and pushed back.
That's-
And the road is, like, I mean, it's washboarded out within two weeks of you guys putting down the new gravel.
Mm-hmm, no, I know, it's a, it's a difficult road to maintain with the traffic and just the geography around that road, I mean, it's very difficult, so, we'd like to do things to it, we'd like to update, but we have to work, you know, with the city at the same time because they have plans as well.
And they're broke.
Yes, I guess so, but, um-
Okay.
And we have, uh, Ms. Beeson, we start with basically our wish list, what we can get done, obviously Haynes is another road that we've, we've kicked the can down the road, New Underwood Road's a road we kicked the can down the road.
Uh, yeah, I know, we're not the only one.
And I'm not saying, I understand your concerns, I'm just saying it's that we started with a wish list, yeah, we'd love to have them all fixed and fixed right, um, when it gets to budget time and where the funds are, yeah, unfortunately, some of that happens, I appreciate it.
But, just a thought, instead of putting a year on there, if it's definitely not within the budget, why not just put, like, it's priority one, priority two, priority three, so the people who are living on the road know, like, hey, it's not happening in five years, instead of seeing a year on there and thinking it's going to happen.
I think this is the format the DOT requires, is to have the five-year.
That's what's unfortunate, is it, it, there's things that I don't, that we have to, we have to do it this way, um, because DOT says we, we require you to say year.
And, but this does allow for any federal or state funding that we could get for any roads, if it's on the, and that's why some of these roads stay on there, but they just don't get done, is because, um, we're hopeful that we can get some other source of funding. It doesn't always work, but that's a good idea.
Yeah, I would just say, I was, sorry, Dreen, I- I could just list that, or we could list them on here, yes, ones that we know are probably gonna get done because we've got the funding secured from, you know, for a federal grant, like some of these bridge projects, when we know we have them secured, we can put them at the top and then move the ones that the funding is less, um, clear on down to the bottom of the list, so there is some type of priority on there, I guess.
I guess anything in twenty-five would be priority one, and then twenty-one on the list.
Yep.
That would be an option.
And the law did change July first as far as how we look at roads and responsibilities, so that was kind of a, you know, something to do with avalanche as well, otherwise we would've treated it differently this year. But, yeah, I know it needs a lot of work and is gonna, to continue to need work, I mean, but, yeah, there's development coming in the area someday, so, right next to town, so, a lot of moving parts yet.
And, and even if it makes the budget, when I came on the commission-
Oh, I know.
You know, in two thousand and eight, it was number one. Got it on the budget once.
I know. So, no, I've just, it used to be chip and seal, and then for whatever reason it was deemed it was cheaper to turn it into gravel, but now you guys are literally throwing gravel at it and it ends up in the ditch.
Yep, I mean, that, every gravel road has that problem.
This commission did not mill up that road.
I- I understand that.
I- I- I just wanted Wendy to know that.
We-
Sorry.
We have plenty of those challenges, uh, and I- I do understand the issues on that.
My concern was it just keeps showing up on this list and nothing ever happens, so.
Thank you. You have any other comments?
Nope.
Okay, well, I appreciate you coming in today.
Tell your dad hi.
Anybody else wanna speak to this plan? Anybody else wanna speak to the plan? Ask one more time, does anybody else wanna speak to this highway plan? Saying nobody coming forward, I'm gonna close public testimony. Uh, is there any commission questions, comments, interaction?
One on, oh, road road plan, uh, structure on Pine Creek.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, that's an H and H, I'm assuming.
Yes.
Don't know what that's for. Um, so, this is one of those, uh, uh, things that- that come up, um, Pine Creek is not a through road, uh, it's a structure that the state, uh, deemed, uh, that the counties would own all of the structures in the nineties and they required all of them, um, this is one of those that comes up, um, I don't know if I a hundred percent agree with, agree with it, but I know it's a requirement, so.
Yeah.
The- the replacement of it? Yeah, and I would just say that, yeah, I mean, that those, like Troy has stated, the funding for these things is years down the road, so this was put into place before a lot of us, you know, were-
Twenty-nineteen, this was originally agreed upon and they're working on it now.
Were managing any of the operations, so, yeah, it was done before our time, we're just-
Just so others know that it's not, it's requirement from this-
Is it on the section line, though?
It is technically not on the section line, but it is in a section line road, so, that's why we-
So, the total number of this, these projects on the five-year plan is twenty-seven million five hundred and five thousand, is that right? Down on the bottom there, on the right. So, just so the public-
Yeah, twenty-seven nine seven three, yep.
Yeah, so just so the public knows, I mean, the most we can come up with is about seven, seven and a half million dollars for a highway, and that covers employees and equipment and everything, so, it's not even feasible, even though we have to put in this plan, it's not feasible that we can, that we'll have the funding to do all these projects as much as we'd like to, but the money just isn't there.
Well, and we only raise eleven million dollars a year in taxes. Maybe more this year, I can't remember, are we, are we up a little bit?
We're budget at twelve.
We're up at twelve, well-
That's what we talked about.
We're never high enough, but, I don't mean that!
(laughing) That was a brave comment.
Public comment is already closed.
Any other questions, comments from the commission on this plan, interaction?
Until we get more industrial development.
Uh, I'll make a motion to approve the five-year plan and authorize the chairman to sign, which is certification.
Second. A motion and second to approve the five-year plan and authorize the chairman to sign, any discussion to that motion?
I'd like to thank Nate and Troy for looking at these, you know, the keen eye and trying to get some sense. It's a challenge, so, appreciate it.
Uh, along with that, um, have we heard anything from the state of South Dakota about New Underwood Road?
Been a while that I know-
Let's keep, let's keep discussion to this motion, please.
Okay, well, that is on this list.
Okay, but the motion is, yep, been me. Uh, any other discussion to this motion? Saying none, all those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Oppose, same sign, motion carries. Uh, let's take about, unless, did you want to ask any more questions?
I have none, Dreen.
Well, you know, talk about road issues and, uh, you know, New Underwood Road plays a huge role in it and the state of South Dakota and... Apparently we'll never get anything.
Well, it's be- beginning to wonder.
All we do is paperwork for the state of South Dakota.
Life for grants. Okay, uh, let's take about a ten, fifteen-minute break, when we come back, I'm gonna, I- I'd like to, I guess I should've realized this sooner, I'd like to move human resources, I'd like to handle all the budget stuff together, uh, so we'll jump right into the auditor, which will be H one, next when we come back, so, unless there's any disagreement. Thank you, let's take a ten-minute break.
That's what I was wondering if they had the tubes out, but Troy said he didn't.
We'll get a gap. Water cycle.
Uh.
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 Uh. Uh, as I said, we're gonna start, unless there's disagreement from the commission, we're gonna start H one auditor, we're gonna move human resources down this agenda. Uh, just an overtime report, just a report, uh, we've, we've talked about this, this just shows up on our, um, agenda every meeting now. Is there any questions, comments to this report? Seeing nothing, uh, go down to the commission, communicate to the commission. Uh, basically, that's just an update, and that? Any questions, comments on that? Um, let's just run down to consent, I guess, so Deborah's not quite back in the room, I told her to be soon, but, uh, she's not here. Is there anything on consent you guys like to talk about?
I'll move or approve consent calendar.
I'll second.
Motion and a second to approve the consent calendar, any discussion to that motion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Basically, brings us to budget stuff, is there a need for, uh, personnel legal or contracts for executive session before we get into some of the budget talks? I am not hearing any, um, brings us to, uh, human resources. Deborah's not quite in here, if you wanna grab her, yeah, please.
I have a personnel padlock.
We all do.
Yeah, but there's nothing on it.
Okay, thank you.
We're ready for you, Deborah, yes, thank you. All right, item F one on the agenda, along, along. Uh, first thing on there, which is the health benefit renewal, would you like to go over that with us, please?
There, okay, Deborah Brandsrud, Mead County HR Director, and today, we're going to be reviewing the final, uh, benefit for twenty twenty-five. Um, the attachment was on the board docs, showing the plan amount. We are looking and considering today the Wellmark proposal. We have the employer cost and the employee class, cost listed by the tier of the health plan, and I think the only thing we wanted to note, uh, moving to Wellmark, is that the co-pay would change from the Avera plan of twenty dollars, the Wellmark co-pay was going to go to twenty-five. That was one of the significant changes on the plan. Everything else was very similar. Um, I think the prescription had one or two less options in their prescription prices, but the same categories were just intermingled. Any questions on what we are proposing for the employee and the employer breakdown?
Uh, so, yeah, and then, it, this, this proposal is, the, the basic difference of this proposal is, is the switch from Avera to, to Wellmark, is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Yep, um, and then, did you get in, there's some additional proposals, which is, uh, we discussed, uh, ambulance insurance as well.
Oh, I'm sorry, you want me to go through all of them? Okay.
Uh, well, yes, you just want to go through all of them.
Sure, I'll keep going. We also added in here, we have a group resource, uh, fee, ten dollars a person for managing our MERC plan. Our dental plan is going to stay as a renewal with MetLife, the twenty twenty.
I'm sorry.
Oh, sure.
I have a question with the MERC plan.
Yep.
Is that still Three Rivers?
It's Group Resources, Inc., and Three Rivers will manage the claims, yes.
Okay.
It's, uh, two companies kind of in one, they do different things.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay.
They will still be there.
I forgot to ask that before, okay.
Cutting us our fifteen-dollar checks.
Okay.
Uh, dental plan is with MetLife, the renewal went up at three dollars, uh, for, it looked like, actually, three dollars and a penny, uh, for twenty twenty-five, making the employer cost, uh, forty-six point oh six per person, per employee, um, as Mead County in the past and continues to pick up the employee portion. And then, there was also an increase to employee plus spouse, employee plus children, and the family plan, as noted on the attachment. There is, um, an A vision plan, the vision plan with MetLife has no changes from the twenty twenty- The vision plan with MetLife has no changes from the 2024 plan. So, everything will stay the same with an $8 a month employer cost and then the tier costs if you want to add family members. There is a GIS admin COBRA fee as they administer the COBRA of the ancillary plans that we have. MetLife basic term life and our AD&amp;D will remain the same. There's been no change to the cost in that particular health benefit as well. We're looking at adding two new ones to consider. The first one is by Massa Access Plus. It is transport coverage by ambulance both for ground and by air. They provided us an $8 cost per employee. And if an employee would like to add family, it is a $9 additional monthly fee. They are willing to start a plan for us anytime we're ready to start, if we would like to do it before January. If we start the plan before January, it will be employees only. They are not able to add any dependents or family members until the open enrollment for 2025.
And when could that take place for the employees?
That can take place October 1st. And they did send a contract over for that.
If that can take place, you mean we could start it effective October 1st? Open enrollment would be in November and then that would, if they added their family, that would be for January.
Starting January, correct, Hubert. The second option we're looking at, considering as MetLife has a short-term disability plan for our employees. We haven't had one of these, but they are becoming popular. And we have had need of some other additional help with illness and injury in Mead County with employees that are new and do not have the time. This one here is an 11-week benefit plan. And the, it's a 14-day waiting period after the doctor's diagnosis and such is accepted to fit into this health plan.
So, the first 14 days, it'd have to use vacation or sick leave?
That is correct, Ted. And this is a group plan, so it's not for individual. It has to be all of the Mead County employees.
Comment on the health plan. The Avera plan and the Wellmark plan came back similar. The Wellmark plan was cheaper in the long run for everybody. Is that correct? I mean, it was pretty close, but...
That's right, Rich. So, when we were looking at plans, I mean, Avera did come back with a very good renewal at the end, at the last moment, giving us a little bit deeper discount than where we currently are. However, from our employees, we felt the Wellmark plan would give us some greater flexibility in where they would like to use and have their medical treatments, both dermatology and physical therapy, things outside of just medical. That is still a savings year over year of our current Avera plan of $26,032. So, we're still saving going to the Wellmark plan even though we'd have, I think, better opportunity to use the plan and have the $25 co-pay.
And then, the four tiers, the employee, employee spouse and children, family. Those were very negligible in the changes. Pretty close to the same. I think the family was like $30 difference. Is that right? I don't remember the numbers offhand, but...
I think the family was 34. I actually think the employee, one of the employee and spouse, I think, might have gone down or maybe those employee and children went down and one went up.
Employee and children went down about $4, I think.
Yeah. Yeah, just so everybody is aware, I mean, it's very close to last year. It's just a different plan.
I think we should also note that initially, until Deborah got involved, the insurance companies had notified us that we would be looking at a 8% to 11% increase. And Deborah took them to task. And I thank you.
Oh, you're welcome. I also went around them a little bit, but that's kind of sometimes what they need to get going. So, we're all in good shape again, we're all friends, so that's good.
Well, I didn't mean to insinuate you weren't. You just got the best deal for everyone.
Any other questions, comments to this?
So, just for clarification, our total health insurance plan is gonna cost us $26,032 less this year than last year?
Yes, so when I'm looking at that number, Ted, I'm looking at the full premium cost. That is not separating the employer and the employee cost. That is the full premium cost is $26,000 less.
Yeah, so that's not all going to the county, some of those to employees. And that doesn't include, that's just the health, that doesn't talk about the dental or...
No, the dental's an increase of $4,320 year over year.
Right, and it doesn't include the new transport coverage if we add that or anything?
On the Massa Access, this is a benefit that we're looking at for ambulance and air. If there is an accident, this will help pick up the cost of that transport.
Also, if an employee was out of traveling somewhere and they needed to be transported back to their local area, it would also help cover in those costs.
And the reason that we're looking at this is because a lot of times, the insurance does not pick up those costs. Is that correct?
Yep.
Or picks up a small portion.
Small, small portion, yes. And you'll see it, I did highlight that on our current plan, but it was like $1,000 or something. It wasn't much at all. So, and here, living in the Black Hills.
Wide open.
Living in Wyoming. Living out here in the wide open. The ambulance, air transportation is being used much more frequently. So, it is costing an employee ambulance by air just to Sturgis or Spearfish, whichever place they take them. And then, usually, they get passed on by air, again, to Rapid City, which is costing a lot of money for the employees. So, that's why I think this is a good plan for them to consider.
Tens of thousands of dollars to get airlifted.
Yep.
To make it clear, this is not, this would be accidents at any time if they were injured as a work-related injury.
Just the ride.
But this is, this is for off-hours work, if they're in a car accident.
Yep, yep. It's their plan to use whenever, not just at work, right?
Gored by a bull.
Mm-hmm, yep.
On the shoot.
Any other questions, comments?
Yeah, I'm still on the health plan here. So, this year on the health plan with the numbers you have here under employer cost and employee cost, is there an increase there? What you have listed over what the employee costs were last year, the four categories?
There is a slight increase to the three tiers of employee plus spouse, employee plus children and family of 1%.
Yeah, it's 1% over what they're currently paying.
Oh, over what they're currently paying.
The cost, so $5.86 for the family. Last year's was $5.
Last year's was...
That would be in the stuff that we...
Lot of numbers flying around this week.
There's a lot of papers and numbers.
Basically, Ristie had that information.
Hmm, let's see if I have it wrote down here. No, I think I just have the Wellmark one in front of me. So, currently, I believe the employee plus spouse is 223 a pay period. So, it'd be about 250-something. Is that what you have? 246? 446 for employee plus spouse?
446 to 472.
Mm-hmm.
$30.
And what about employee children?
Employee children went down about $4.40. There's a big savings in that one because you just have one adult. The family went up from five... I should have brought that sheet in with me.
Actually, Deborah, is this what you're looking for? This sheet?
I thought I had it with me.
And actually, the renewal, it's down in all those categories if we would have renewed with it.
I was just gonna say, did you bring the Megan Fine Glass with you? Let me see here. Okay, so our current plan is for the family, $5.51, $1.84 a month.
So, it's currently $5.51?
Yep.
So, and it's going to $5.64?
$5.86.
$5.86.
Oh, I'm sorry.
$5.86.
$5.86. And then, what's the employer cost go up?
So, the employer cost currently is $16.55 and the employer cost is going to $16.69.
But I want to point out that that's current cost. Had we renewed with Avera, it would be $17.03.
And the employee would have been 600 something?
Yes, so actually, the employee cost would have been $5.67.88 and it's $5.86.69. So, it's...
Actually, if we would have stayed with Avera on their last bid that they brought us, it would have been $15.80.
Okay.
.30 on their family, on our, yeah. On our portion for employer cost for family.
I shredded all my old ones.
That's okay, because they came back three times with a new MERC, so they were working at it.
But overall, the Wellmarks, Wellmark's a better plan with more availability providers in the area.
Mm-hmm, that's correct.
Because when you said people's ability, I mean, even under Avera, you could go to anybody you wanted. It's just the fact that you're paying out of, you could potentially be stuck paying out of...
Out of network.
Out of network costs. Where Wellmark, they're pretty much everybody's member.
Right, and also, if you go East River to medical, you're not just having to go to Avera. You can choose any of the large medical facilities you want to with the Wellmark plan. Or Mayo, you can also go to Mayo on the Wellmark.
Right, because if you had to go to Sioux Falls, if you didn't go to...
You had to go to Avera.
If you didn't go, well, or pay out of...
Out of network.
Out of network. Because Sanford doesn't take like Avera.
Yep. And same, if we had Sanford plan, you would have to pay out a network to go to Avera.
But under Wellmark, they're both within network.
They're both, yes.
So, part of the reason that the insurance came in at $26.32 lower this year is because all the people on our health insurance really had relatively low claims?
Our claims have been very low, yes, which is a good thing. And right now, with last week's last claim that came in, that week brought us, I think we are maybe over $30. I mean, it's less than $100 bucks of where we were last year at the same time in our claims. So, hopefully, we'll have the same carry-through all the way through to the end of the year.
Well, getting sick at the same rate.
Yep.
Any other questions, comments? Is there desire from the commission to pass this proposal or...
Is there...
Or to take something off or add something to it?
Anybody in the audience?
Is there anybody in the audience that'd like to speak to this health insurance, excuse me, insurance plan?
Or are we looking for a motion that, for each carrier or a motion?
I would think we could add this entire proposal, if you'd wish, to the budget.
Well, the only thing that...
I think we need to add them separate.
That's fine, if that's the desire of the commission, I'm fine with that.
I didn't mean to freeze you out.
Well, you know...
Freeze us all up, Doreen.
Yeah, you're very powerful.
Oh, yeah.
I'll make a motion to adopt the proposed healthcare plan from Wellmark for 2025.
I'll second.
Motion and second to add the proposed health plan to the budget for 2025. Any discussion to that motion?
So, does that motion include these figures on the health plan?
Yes, with, yes.
So, it'd be with the 1%.
That's what we'd be putting, that's what we're going to be putting on the budget is these numbers.
Well, the discussion I have is...
And to be getting contracts signed with this.
Discussion I have is in light of the fact that we were able to pretty much stay flat on the insurance. I think our employees have been suffering with, like all of us, with inflation. You know, I mean, it can be argued that our employees have had to pay an extra $10,000 to $15,000 a year for the basic needs, groceries, gas, clothing, household goods. I would like to, I won't be voting for this motion because I would like to keep the employee spouse and the family at the 25% instead of the 26%. I, I don't really see a need that we have to raise it this year, you know. In the future, as insurance goes up, I can see it happening. But I'd like to help the employees out as much as we can on their paychecks, trying to recover through this inflation period. Depending on how the election goes, it could get a lot worse for them next year.
So, am I to take that as a motion to amend this, Mr. Seaman?
No, I, I'm just...
You're just not gonna vote for it, okay, that's fine.
I'm just stating, you know...
Certainly, okay.
Someone else wants to amend this, that's fine. I just, that's my discussion and my thoughts on it.
Thank you. Any other discussion to that motion?
Well, since he didn't make that in as a motion, I will.
Oh, wait. No, we have a motion and a second. Doreen is offering an amendment to the motion. So, we have a motion to pass this proposal as proposed, which are with these numbers. Doreen, Commissioner Creed has moved to amend and to adjust the employee spouse, employee children, family. Is that correct, Commissioner Creed?
For all employee participation percentages to remain at the current level.
At 25%.
Wow, that's...
25 and 13.
Well, 12 is what the employee portion is, okay.
We have a motion to amend, I need a second to...
I'll second.
Motion and a second to amend these numbers. Any discussion to the amendment?
Yeah, one thing I would point out is we're incredibly generous on our healthcare plans. Incredibly generous. In most situations I see, the most the employer pays is just the single member. It's very rare to see the percentages we're paying. You know, in most, in a lot of places, the employer won't even pay any of the dental plan, they'll just make it available. So, you know, I look at this as a package. I look at that, we're very generous, we're adding some additional coverage with the, well, I anticipate we're gonna make the motion for like the ambulance. And so, making refinements and adjustments of modest numbers, especially in years such as this, is appropriate. So, I'm gonna oppose the amendment to my original motion. You know, I've been an advocate over the years for COLAs when other people on this board were against them. I tend to expect I'll be an advocate for a COLA again this year. So, I look at it holistically, I don't look at it in isolation.
And I certainly appreciate your view.
Any more discussion to this amendment? Nope, we're, we're motion second, so we've got action on the floor, so it's only, only board to speak now. Any other discussion to this amendment? Saying none, this is a vote on the amendment to change that from the 26 to the 25. Being real clear here. All those in favor of the motion to amend, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion fails. So, now, we're back to the main motion, which is to approve this proposal as proposed, which was the original motion by Commissioner Wazoric and seconded by Commissioner Liggett. Any other discussion to this motion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Oppose, same sign, motion carries. Uh, we have, I'd like the secretary to note that we had one nay, would you like your name listed, Mr. Seaman? Yes, Commissioner Seaman voted no. Uh, let's go, if I could get some action on the dental plan.
I'll make a motion, do I need to, how about the administrative fee? The administrative fee, is that a, is that part of the healthcare portion? So that would include.
Yes, we, I just wanted to make sure it was noted that we have a ten dollar, this year it was eleven and they backed off one dollar.
And that's that's part of the healthcare.
It's not included in any of those costs, but it's part of the healthcare.
That the county will pay the additional ten.
Yeah, mm-hmm, they do.
But that's all, it's all within the healthcare plan that we just adopted, all on the healthcare contract. Yeah, and so I'll make a motion to approve the dental plan as proposed um for twenty twenty five. And that's that GRS COBRA fee, is that include, that's for the dental plan?
Yes, that is uh included in our package. Um, it's the dollar fee for administering, we use their online system, yeah, and in COBRA.
Including the related fee.
Yep.
Motion and second to approve the dental plan as proposed, is there any discussion to this motion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign, motion carries, vision plan.
I'll make a motion to approve the vision plan as presented of MetLife twenty twenty five renewal plan.
I'll second.
Motion and second to approve the vision plan as proposed, is there any discussion to this motion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign, motion carries. Uh, MetLife.
Sure.
One, start my timer.
I do have quite a couple, we can discuss maybe why she's catching up, but did you have a question? Uh, Rich, um, before we get to the the disability um portion of that, do we have to act on that today to think of eligible January one? Because we're talking about just adoption of that, or can we have further discussions on that where it doesn't jam us up?
You do not need to, you mean on the short term disability?
The short term disability.
I don't need that today.
Okay, I, because.
The other ones I do because it's open enrollment.
Understood, um, uh, so, but I'm kind of, I'm in my groove now, but I'll probably stop there so if people know, because I think there probably needs, I have some further questions on that where I just need some more.
Yes, if there's more information that you want, I can get that for you too from the plan.
Um, so, uh, I think I'm on my MetLife basic term life, I'll make a motion.
I don't, are we already ready?
Are we ready, I'm sorry.
Okay, yep.
Um, I'd make a motion to approve the proposed MetLife twenty twenty five annual renewal for the term life.
I'll second.
Motion and a second to approve the proposed MetLife basic term life policy. Any discussion to that motion? Good job, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign, brings us to Massa Access Transport Coverage, are you ready, Chris? Okay, one second.
Well, and just for the record, just to reiterate, this would be a brand new coverage, being totally covered by the county for the employee, the family, an employee can add the family, but not until open enrollment in November, and that's at nine dollars to cover family.
A month.
But I guess I, I don't, we don't have, this would be for twenty five, I don't think.
No, I mean, I could, this would be, this would add this right away, we can add it right away, and so, but.
But it'd just be available for them in twenty five.
Right, so what is the cost for us a year then?
It's eight dollars, it's.
It's eight dollars for an employee, for us it's nine hundred and sixty a month.
I understand, that's for the year, it's eight dollars, so it's eight dollars a month then, is what you're saying.
Eight dollars per employee, nine sixty a month.
Nine sixty.
It's three grand. Nine hundred and sixty thousand a month.
So, um, so I guess, I, I, there, yeah, I would like to add though that if if we want to continue this starting now, I guess we're gonna, this is technically for the twenty five budget, but if you want to do it, prefer two motions?
Right, mm-hmm, I agree.
I see, okay.
Right, um, so I'll make a motion to add, uh, or to to have, I tell you what, I'll do it this way. I'll make a motion for uh, Deborah to secure a contract from Massa Access that we can act on at our next meeting, and then at that next meeting, we should, we'll have to also include in the resolution approving the contract where the funds will be taken from for the rest of the year.
Hmm.
Um, uh, to add that effective as early as.
Thank you, I, that's what I would prefer.
Okay.
I'll second.
Motion and a second to add to the agenda of our next meeting a contract that we can get all of our employees on this immediately, as well as work with Ken, because we're gonna need a resolution to this effect, since this is not a budgeted item.
Okay.
Uh, any discussion to that motion?
Will that still work with, okay?
I think so, yep.
Okay.
Yeah, it was my understanding, if we're gonna start, we're gonna have to get a contract, you can't get it until the next.
I have the contract, they did send it over.
Well, you don't have it on the agenda for that.
Yeah, we'd have to.
I have it, I do not have it on the agenda, the contract, because it's a, just an e-sign document.
Yeah.
Yeah, but wouldn't it count since we already have it? We have the health insurance on our agenda.
I think you need to post, post the contract.
Okay.
I agree, that's where I was, that's why my original question, I think we need two separate motions, I think it needs to be on the agenda specifically.
Okay.
The contract.
The contract, or at least saying that we're going to sign a contract or, and in the resolution, something on the agenda that we can take action on.
Okay.
So what we'd look for is to approve it on the contract, um, and then, but we also have to figure out how to pay for it.
Yeah, that's, and that's the key issue. So we have a motion and second to put that on the agenda for next meeting. Any other discussion to this motion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Now, I'd like to uh visit about if we'd want to add this for twenty five.
Uh, make a motion uh to add the Massa Access coverage with the county paying for the employee portion as part of our insurance package for twenty twenty five, giving the option, that's part of the package, it was just.
Mm-hmm. For their family, mm-hmm.
Okay, I'll just keep rambling on.
I will second that too, Chris.
Yes.
Motion and a second to add the Massa Access Transport Coverage uh to these, as proposed to the budget for this year, for twenty five. Um, any other discussion to that motion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Oppose, same sign.
I I wanna add that uh, the fact that we're getting this through the group is a huge savings, that the minimum cost to get this insurance as an individual runs anywhere from twenty nine to forty nine dollars a month.
Mm-hmm. Yes, if you go out and get it on your own, correct?
Uh, Rich did.
Trying to keep it easy for you. Um, so and then finally.
I'm not sure if you're already, okay.
The one point I have, I'm not gonna make a motion to approve the short term disability. Point. I'm not gonna make that.
I'm not, thank you, Mr. Wazoric, yep, you've been doing a good job with your motion so far, thank you. Uh, so that. Yes, it carried, motion carried, yep, yep. Uh, brings us down to the the last proposal on here, which is a MetLife short term disability, any discussion and or action on this?
And I'll just say, I'm leaning towards this, we're trying to get the budget done, but uh, this is a change, something new that we're trying to figure out how.
Any discussion and or action to this as of now?
I I make a motion, we just continue this until the next meeting.
And it, it.
The disability.
Okay, that's fine, so I don't necessarily think we need a motion for that, because we can always discuss it unless you want to make sure it's on the agenda.
I want to make sure it's on the agenda.
Okay, we got a motion that we have to put this on the agenda for next time.
I'll second that.
A motion and second that we continue the talks on the short term disability item, so it'll be on the agenda for next time with uh, um, between Ria and you guys make sure this gets on the agenda then, next time? Uh, any discussion to this motion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Uh, that covers our health benefit renewal stuff, uh, brings down to item F two of twenty twenty five cost of living.
Okay, so um, our next item is the twenty twenty five COLA, and uh, twenty twenty three, you, the commission had proposed a one dollar COLA for twenty twenty four. Um, believe it was well received by employees, they felt it was very fair, um, everybody received the same amount, and um, I'm taking silence meant a good thing in that case. Uh, so this year, as the commission has decided, we'd like to propose again for twenty twenty five. The COLA would be effective on December twenty third with the first pay period of twenty twenty five. That's when the first pay period begins. The COLA amount for our current population of employees, um, fully uh occupied, uh, everybody in full position would be a hundred and eighteen full-time employees. Uh, came to about two hundred and seventy three thousand five hundred and twenty dollars for just the COLA. Um, that does not include the tax amounts. I think it was three oh five, three hundred and five thousand with the taxes and the match.
We have three ten up here.
Oh, three ten, okay. I I did a couple little tweaks yesterday, so it's fine.
It is being proposed that essentially a dollar an hour increase for all all employees. Is there any questions, comments from the commission to that?
Deborah, I think, and we're good, we're doing a, got a wage study, I think, that we're doing this year.
Yes, that's my next item here, mm-hmm.
So, um, and last time we did that, we shifting certain jobs around.
Mm-hmm.
So this would take, this would be, would be just across the board add, and then looking at adjustments first half of next year, probably again.
So what we were kind of discussing, um, as you remember last, this last week, is to go ahead and approve the COLA for the end of this year. The wage, and it's a classification and compensation system update is what it's referred to as, and they're going to take the current one that we're using, they're going to review it, um, they will still be interviewing some of the employees, the department heads, um, looking to see where we've made changes since twenty twenty two. They will um prepare for us again, I believe, three class, or three compensation reviews or um modules, and then also uh update our classification, the one that we're currently using for us. So the best thing to do then, since this will start in March, is to consider the step increases and the, any wage increases in July, is what we were kind of discussing, so we have two times a year the employees would benefit. If that's, that's kind of the thought going forward to get a better momentum with all the increases at the same time versus spread throughout the year.
So the the COLA cost is a, it's a dollar an hour for all the employees, but then some of the employees are eligible for step increases, which.
Yes.
Could.
Still for this year, yeah.
Still, still, so there is an increase, uh, it's not just the dollar, uh, some employees will get or may get a step increase.
Yep, because we don't have anything going forward yet. So the step increases would stay in place until we came back to meet again to make that decision.
Just so everybody's aware, this isn't, this three hundred and ten thousand dollars not just, that's not all of the cost that the employees are gonna.
That's just the COLA.
Um, there's probably another.
The step increases for next year, um, with taxes and the SDRS match came to fifty five thousand four hundred and twenty nine, based on thirteen weeks.
If you did it for a year, it'd be about a hundred and ten thousand roughly, so.
Uh, maybe, maybe not that much, because it's about sixty one percent of the employees benefit next year from the step increase.
Thirteen pay periods, I'm correct.
Thirteen pay periods, right.
You said weeks, that's.
Mm-hmm.
And I I just wanted to make, to throw that out there.
No, yeah, I'm, yeah, it's not the only, it's not the only increase that staff will get, this is a, just a across the board one. But there's other, there's gonna be some other movement. Um, and just for clarification purposes, the dollar an hour does not count to elected officials, because that.
Mm-hmm.
So that's not applied to elect.
Would it apply to part time and um?
Elected officials.
Please, no, okay, great, okay.
Yeah, the decision on elected officials is.
Is that first year.
Yeah, we've, we've made some, put some things in the budget.
You're right, right.
Okay, could I get a, some action uh as far as moving this COLA forward or not into the budget for this year?
I'll make a motion to approve the dollar an hour across the board for full-time and part-time positions.
I'll second.
Before we go, one clarification, well, I guess board, people that are like on planning, they're not, are they paid as employees?
Or it's not applied to board members in the past.
Okay, so I would add to my motion, unelected and board.
And, yeah, okay.
May I ask if the commission is considered a board member?
Well, that, we're in elected position.
And that is by statute has to be done.
Yeah.
So this would include weed and past and planning board?
Yeah, it would not, they would not get the dollar an hour, yeah, by board members, yeah, weed and past, planning.
And even if the motion, yeah, it wouldn't, because it just would be going to the budget, because that would necessarily meaning that it would happen in January.
Then they're not paid by the hour, they're paid by the meaning.
Yep.
I mean, I just wanted to make that clear.
Certainly, yep.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, we have a motion and second on the floor to uh move forward with this increase for for COLA. Uh, any discussion to that motion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Uh, brings us down for the proposal for reviewing and updating compensation classification system.
Hey, I had an opportunity to secure our first agreement, we did speak about this in twenty twenty two, that we would review our classification and compensation uh tables and pay uh in three years, which brings us to twenty twenty five. And speaking with Condrey and Associates, the best time to do this is usually the third to sixth month of the year. You have people that have made changes in their county, cities, state governments are all done by March, so it's a better time to go ahead and and have the the update done. They proposed uh to us a twenty seven thousand five hundred dollar agreement. Um, if we are able to pay for this and sign it before December, they would reduce the agreement to twenty seven thousand, um, sign it. None of the timelines or deadlines will change, everything will stay effective with our March calendar uh to complete every, all the activities.
I'm just gonna note, just so everybody's clear, this is, everything else we've been talking about was for the twenty five budget. This is a direct cost, that would happen right now is why this is on our agenda.
I also had Ken take a look at the first agreement I received, I think it was in July, and he said it was good. It's our standard basic agreement, there was no issues with it, so he has reviewed that one.
Any discussion to this?
Do you have money in your budget, I don't remember if it's.
Um, no, I had put it in my twenty five budget, but we were looking to see if we could use some of this from our um monies that was sitting in the medical, the Wellmark count that was not used from twenty twenty two.
But that's still, that that went back to the general fund, so.
Right, so it'd come out of the general fund then.
Yeah, but but we, we did not.
But the funds had not been.
Yeah, but we had not counted it as in our means of finance this year for our budget, so it would be.
But it would, this would come out of our contingency.
Right.
Yep.
Right.
Well, that, yeah.
Mm-hmm.
It could either do that or there's.
We we got money one way or the other.
And we have that in the contingency.
Well, and I guess contingency, yeah, we could possibly, even Ted brought up a point, there's money within the commission budget that could fit there as well, you brought that up last meeting?
I was wa- asking if there was.
I think there is. I think there is. I can't remember the exact line item, Ria, you and I took a look at that last meeting.
I believe it'd be professional services.
Think that would work as well. So that was going to be my next question is where we want to take it, but that seems like a logical choice. There's money there, it's budgeted. I don't know how we would, we probably need a resolution if we go contingency right now.
Yeah, that, I, that makes sense to me. And then, and then your proposed budget would just reduce by a like amount, is that?
Yes, we, we did remove that last commission meeting. You took it out already.
Yeah, we, yeah.
Yep.
I think the one you were going.
You were not here.
Oh, well, that was the last.
I think you missed that joyful moment, Dave.
So any other questions, comments or action on this?
I'm, I'll make a motion to enter into the contract and pay the fee before the end of the year out of the commission budget for professional services.
I'll second.
Motion and a second on the floor to go ahead with this proposal out of professional services in the commission budget? Any, any other, any discussion to this motion? Saying none, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Oh, same sign, motion carries. Thank you, Ms. Brenzard, you've been busy.
We're not done. We are today, but.
Oh, I was going to say, don't scare me like that.
Except for exec session. Alrighty, thank you very much.
Brings us down to outside agency funding. We went through this, I think, we've, we've hashed and rehashed this. Does anybody else have anything? I do, I have one thing, but I'll let everybody else go first because I'm so nice.
Over H one, I don't.
H one.
The overtime report, I don't.
Yep, we would, that was just reported, yep, yep, thank you.
Um, yeah, I do. Um, I've been contacted, both Ria and I have been contacted by ABC. They would like sixty thousand dollars from the opiate money now.
In addition to the?
No, they've never gotten any.
No, no, in addition to the other opiate, okay.
Right, and what, what I was wondering about, since we have some of this opiate money included into this budget, don't we need to have that to be a, a separate line item and, and we told the others we would be discussing it later in the year? So.
You don't.
I, I think that these should come out of these twenty-five requests for outside agency and put in a separate bucket. And then.
Wait, a separate bucket as far as what, I guess I'm asking?
Opiate money.
Okay, that's fine.
And then I think that the sixty thousand dollar request told them we need to have them come in and talk to us.
I would agree with that. But, and the opioid money is sitting in general, in the general funds, where there's no separate funds for that. I don't disagree, it's, it, it, it gives me, it gives me a little, I've had the same question with the state auditor as well. If we need to get something set up, his, he advised me not to set up a separate fund on this. He said, uh, simple, basic accounting was, I'm just quoting him, is to do it with less funds. So therefore, that's, I, because I thought it should go into a separate fund.
Well.
But he, Al, the state auditor, said disagreed. Now, if the, the commission wishes to do otherwise, I'm fine with that.
Well, I'm betting the feds might have some requirements.
Well, I think the difference is that you track those funds.
Yes.
Separate.
Yep, that's what he said, and, and the auditor's office is, is currently tracking them and they have a, they have it down to the T.
Oh, I, I know, they do.
And I asked, because I asked the auditor's office that one day I was in there, if it'd be easier for them if we did set up a separate fund. They said they did not care. So I called Al and he advised to just leave it alone. So we, but yes, we need to keep track of it. But I don't disagree, we went through these outside agencies. We've actually closed it and then reopened it and let some people come back in, I think it's.
Right, and, and you see, I think in order to do a year-to-year comparison, we're, we're getting kind of off track this year. When we put the drug ones in there and also after we moved the, the nurse and the 4H to another.
So the simple question is if we could do it without a fund, but we could possibly do it as a, a department or something to that effect.
Just, the separate line, yeah.
And Department four-four-six, she, uh, we have opioid settlement and drug abuse, which we have proposed for, it's not quite ninety thousand, is it? But there was thirty, thirty and seventy-five hundred, so that's, it'd be sixty-seven-five is the, is what was asked for, and we moved that little extra. So that could actually come out when we get down some of that.
Well, it might need, you know, re-analyzed.
Okay, we could keep some extra.
We might need to.
I see what you're saying.
To raise it up or?
So we could budget it ninety is what, is still fine.
Or should we budget the amount of money we actually got?
And that's a revolving door, isn't it? But we could budget the two-twenty then, I guess, is what, is, is around two-hundred-and-twenty, isn't that correct, Ria?
I believe it's two-twenty-one and.
Yeah, something like that.
And, and so then we would just have a cash carryover at the end of the year for that money that is not spent.
And that's, we, we certainly can, that, what I hate about that is when we budget money, especially out of general or highway, that there's a levy on, we pay the five percent. I know you can, you can, I'm being like my grandfather right at this moment in time, when we're talking about cha, extra change. But that's where that issue comes in, is when that comes up and, and, and that, but, because it would be, so that's, that was, ask, actually, that was, in my mind, that was why I thought it'd be advantageous for us to set up a fund, because it would just sit and come out of that and the five percent wouldn't be the.
I think that's what we ought to do, even if Al hasn't.
I, I don't disagree, but that's.
Let's do it.
Well, when you say fund, I don't know what you mean.
Uh, there's, we have funds, the highway fund, there's one, it's a two-oh fund. Cash goes in, has to pay for only highway stuff. Um, so therefore, my mind would be, we could set up a opioid settlement fund. All the money that comes in goes in there, all the money that goes out of there, just keep track of, within that fund. Uh, twenty-four-seven has one, uh, communications nine-one-one is a fund. No, I, 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 I don't care. The auditor's office certainly didn't care whichever way we went about it, but I don't know if we're ready to do that today. I think today we budget what we think we should and, and go on.
Well, we told ABC that they would be up later in the year, so.
And that's fine, there's, there's currently about sixty-seven-five that we've essentially approved in proposals and we have ninety thousand in the budget right now. So if they came in, they could get some of that money, I would say.
That would leave twenty-five.
If we approved, if we approved it. So I, I guess, that's my thinking, leave it alone right now.
Well, I think it should just be in a separate fund so we don't have to pay anything.
So is this opiate money kind of one-time money?
No.
Oh, I'm assuming it's not going to be coming in.
It will be coming in for, if I understand Ken correctly, it will be coming in for a number of years, dependent on the lot, the settlement per company. And I think the max for, I don't know how many settlements was six years. And we are.
That's what I was thinking, three to six years, we have some income coming, but.
Right, it's not a perpetual number.
I, I don't know what the remainder coming in would be.
Well, it's.
And I think if we put it on our, um, non-mandated thing, it will become a perpetual.
Yeah, I mean, we, I, I, I see, I totally, I agree. On the outside agency funding, it probably makes sense to have this COVID money as a separate list. When that money goes away, and I always worry about these agencies and coming in and asking for it, that they're going to build it into their budget. And then they're going to be in here screaming because we won't give them fifty thousand we don't have anymore.
Dreen, that's an easy fix. I'll be happy to create a new list for that.
I also find it ironic once we started saying how much was within that amount of money, we all got overwhelmed with requests. And some of these are good, but I'm not saying that, I'm just pointing that.
Yeah, I guess the question is, what do you do with that money and whether you just.
Well, like I said, so far we've had, now with the addition of that, it's hundreds, half of that, half of that money.
Well.
That could go pretty quick.
And, and like I wrote back to Kara, um, you know, when you're asking sixty thousand, I, I think we need to have a presentation of how that money's being spent, I think.
Um, so you're, you're not proposing a change to this outside agency funding?
Yes, I am.
What are you proposing?
I'm proposing that we take everything that was opioid out of it.
And those, those would be Compass Point, Northern Hills Diversion and Northern Hills Drug Court.
What was, and the question I have on that, I don't disagree with you, Commissioner Creed. Uh, the question I have is that in the very beginning, Ria, when we started this budget process, we had these out and we were notified that they had to go back into here, is that?
I think we had them in the state's attorney's.
We had them in state's attorney's budget.
Two of them we had in, the state's attorney had in their budget and we made them, removed them from their budget.
Okay, that was the problem. I didn't know if there was a problem.
They were new to the state's attorney's budget?
Yes, but we had them removed from the state's attorney's budget because it cannot be in there.
Right, yeah, um.
We did not make any motions, we just had discussions.
We just said, this is what we're going to agree on. There was no motion as far as this being approved. We just kind of went through them and we agreed to the funding level. And we, as long as there was three of us agreeing to it, I took that down as let's keep that. So we can certainly add a different line item to the budget, can't we, Ria?
Are you saying create a different fund?
Well, no, we can't create a different fund today.
For next year?
We, we, we got a look into creating a different fund, but what, what Commissioner Creed is asking, and I'm just clarifying if I'm wrong, Dreen, you're asking for some, this not to be included in outside agency, but, but to be included somewhere else in this year's budget.
About opioids.
Opioids is fine, that's fine. So that's certainly something we can do, that'd be fairly easy.
Absolutely.
We'll have to go do some figuring. I don't think we need a motion for that, there's really nothing that's set here, but we just create a different department essentially. I'm, I, does anybody have anything else on outside agency?
Okay. After we take the opioids. If we're going to do, if we're going to do a comparison, our outside funding total should be more like about a hundred and fifty thousand. Not three hundred and sixty thousand.
Currently, it's, currently we've added up sixty-seven-five if I'm onto this, is that correct?
But gotta take the sixty-five, eighty-one out because off of the two-fourteen, if we're going to be doing like comparisons, because the, the nurse and the 4H, the different.
Nurse and 4H is in here, in here. But they should, but they should be moved, moved in by the process, you're right. It's on this page. That was moved, it's similar to what we're doing with opioids is what we're doing with nurse.
So I'm just saying, for comparison's sake, this, this budget is more than double.
This outside agency funding budget has.
Right, right.
Yes, yes. Uh, mainly because of the addition of the opioid.
Because of the opioid, because of the working against violence, I mean, we have not voted on these individual items.
Uh, we voted on, we didn't vote on, actually, what was voted on last time and motion by Commissioner Seaman, if I remember right, was to leave all funding levels the same as last year for outside agency funding.
With the exception of Black Hills Council, local government.
And that was to raise, that was actually a vote. And then you, then we also added the, the opioid stuff is what we did.
I couldn't find it in the minutes.
Ri, right, because.
So that was, I was to assume, since that didn't, since that was not on last year, I was to assume that was supposed to be left off of this year's budget with that motion, would that have been correct?
If the motion was, I mean, you guys must have done this. Oh, you're gone.
It was actually last.
What, what I'm trying to get to is this is not an accurate number.
This is the proposals.
Yeah, but then you said Ted, Ted made that motion, which we do, which is.
Uh, for some reason, these proposals are, are all just left.
I thought that, I thought that the opiate deal wasn't really going to go to the outside agency in our, in our budget.
Right.
That it was just going to be a one-time gift that we remove from the budget, but we're just going to appropriate that opiate money to those. And we didn't make a decision on working against violence in corporations, they want fifty thousand.
No, because it wasn't necessary, because your motion didn't include that, because we didn't fund them last year.
Right, yeah. Right.
Your motion was only to fund everything that we funded last year at the same level, if I would recall.
Yeah, because I want the outside agencies in the budget, but I don't necessarily want, I, I just want the opiate, people with getting opiate funding to be a one-time gift.
So that's, that's going to be separate from the outside agency, so we can include that separately.
Right.
But then, like, you're right, working against violence, this is just what they requested.
Right.
And we did not, we, we voted, actually with that motion, it would have been a re, motion to not fund them.
Right.
Okay, as long as everyone's clear. So do I have any other questions? Like I said, I have something I'm going to offer.
So then in essence, our outside funding for this year will be about a hundred and fifty thousand.
If we, yeah, I'd have to see.
Because we're taking.
Do you have a list of the outside, could we show what, what that would have included from last year then?
Well, the easiest thing is all you got to do is.
Is to go down to twenty fours, yes.
Is to just deduct that sixty-five, eighty-one.
Well, just go down to twenty fours and add almost two thousand, you take out the, the nurse and the 4H.
But just sixty-five, eighty.
So you're, you're right about, you're just about right, just my rough estimate. Are you good with that then?
Mm-hmm.
I'm going to offer, um, I'm going to take another stab at this. I, I quasi-promised I would not, but I'm going to, I'm, I'm pulling at my harpstrings here a little bit. Um, Faith and Any Ambulance, um, they've requested five thousand dollars. Uh, what I'd like to propose on our Meade County Firefighters Association, this, this pains me as much as anything because it, um, I'm, I rely on them as well. Um, Meade County Firefighters Association, if you, that forty thousand is split into two different categories. One is for workman's comp, which also includes ambulance, and one is a direct twenty thousand dollar payment to the firefighters. Uh, last year, the workman's comp cost us about fourteen thousand, split up between the firefighters. Correct me if I'm wrong, Ria, because it was numbers we looked up. Fourteen thousand, uh, the year before was about sixteen thousand and the year before was seventeen thousand. What I'd like to do is take, um, take about thirty-five hundred out of that workman's comp, because I think it's, we've never spent all twenty thousand of that to go over to the Faith and Any Ambulance. Um, I'd also like to take out about, uh, this one's going, I'm going to hear about it. Uh, Belkirk Conservation, like take out five hundred. I'd like to take out five hundred out of Tri-County. And then the remainder out of SEDC to come up with fi, SEDC to come up with five thousand for the Faith and Any Ambulance.
Realize that this is.
Might be a, go ahead.
Realize that this is maybe exception for, from all the other.
I, I realize that, but if I recall from what I've been told, uh, the last time somebody set up a taxing district, uh, the commission told them I was not on the board, but I was told, the, the commission told them that they'll help them out for a year or two until they can get their taxing district set up. Now, I'm going to make that into a motion if it dies for lack of a second. I, I might pout for a little bit, maybe just an hour or so, but that's going to be about it. So, uh, that's, we can move on. But I'm, I'm just going to make that in a, in a proposal, uh, to try to help them out up there.
So I'm, I'm going to ask a question. You're saying that we can take thirty-five hundred out of the firefighters association, right?
I would specifically like to see it taken out. We have never spent, it's been a long time since we've spent the full twenty thousand on the workman's comp portion of that budget.
You know, it, it just, it just. You know, it just, it just, it just makes it really hard when you had to sit there and look at all the people and tell them no. And say, "Yes."
It's getting quiet, so I can take that as dying for lack of a second.
Can I just ask a question?
Sure.
I've looked at the minutes from September tenth and September nineteenth, and I don't see a motion on the, in the minutes.
On the, which...
On any of the outside agents.
Okay, and I guess I thought there was a motion from Ted. I'm quite...
Unless it went back further.
I looked all the way back.
I, I remember Ted suggesting that, but I don't remember there being a motion.
I think we just had the discussion to move on, but...
I just said that'd be the easiest way to handle it.
And you're probably right, because we were just kinda informally saying, if we could get three people to agree to the funding level of each one, it'll be included in the budget. So, because technically, nothing is officially need a motion until the approval of the budget.
Technically, I don't think we voted on it.
We have not, because the only thing we need to vote on is the budget, 'cause all things can be changed up until we pass the budget.
Yeah, so it's basically a vote to include it at the budget at this point.
That's basically what we're asking for.
And we wanted to make sure Talbot got that vote.
So, you're correct, there's no official vote on anything. It was just agreed that we'd put that in, included in the budget. If, if, uh, I, if I'm not hearing somebody else agree, and it's gonna take three of us to pass it, so therefore, we can move on. Hmm?
Motion. A lot of moving parts to it, so. And to be fair, I, I'm, I will support helping them in making a taxing district, um, because I think we've done that before, and I think that's the right thing to do. Um, I know it's a lot of labor and a lot of work, but it does spread that out across to everybody. Um, I can't, I can't support this because it's not...
Okay.
Yeah, so generally, what we do when we help those districts is, I don't think we supplement them all after the formation, but we help them, or we've given some for them to hire a lawyer, to go put, to get, help them with paperwork, and a surveyor, and stuff like that, and then we hold the election at our cost and everything. We've done some of that, as I recall, but I don't recall ever, like, after it's established, us throwing money at them.
I don't believe so. After it was established, no.
Oh, that's fine. Well, like I said, I...
I will say that, if I may offer, Mr. Chair,
Mm-hmm.
that if they were to start working on a district today, the soonest that they would collect any funds would be twenty-twenty-six, if they were to be able to be successful in the next few months.
Yeah, I mean, 'cause they're got, the district levels are all set as of November one. If you create a district after November one, it won't be on twenty-twenty-five yet.
I, I could be wrong. Lord knows I am wrong. But because the rural people could not collect taxes or almost establish themselves, I think we pay them. Service them and...
And that was partly my point, but again, I'm not gonna try to keep beating it.
But that was after they'd had a positive...
I'm not, like I said, I'm not beating it.
No, no.
Yeah, there might have been something there where we, we, we get something to continue to provide ambulance care out there till they could get established.
And it had moving parts, 'cause I didn't wanna increase it to this budget.
Oh, man.
Till they got to collect the taxes, um...
Probably four years ago. It was pre-COVID. Yeah, it'd been five.
Five, yeah. I don't know. Time goes by so quickly.
We've been having so much fun, it just moves on.
Let's move on. Uh, next thing, oh, did you have something else to add to that?
I was just gonna make a motion.
What, where are you at on the motion?
I was gonna make a motion on the outside agency funding.
Okay, that'd be wonderful, 'cause we probably need that.
Um, I'll make a motion to approve the outside agency funding on the twenty-twenty-four levels, except for Black Hills Council, moving that to the seventeen thousand. Um, removing the, uh, nurse, because that's a budgeted item, and also four-H, because that was also a budgeted item. Uh, puts our outside ag, agency at around a hundred and fifty-five thousand, two fifty-two, I think.
May I also, I have a note here, Doreen, that we added the Faith Library at nine thousand. Do you have that on your, I have it handwritten on this list.
No, I do not have that, because...
I thought they were on last year.
The Faith Library has never...
I don't remember, I don't remember, remember submitting.
...submitted a request.
Okay. Remove from the list.
Yeah, it's not on my list. Yeah, I don't remember that.
We always gave them money, even though they never asked.
So, this is...
Cause we gave the others all some.
Funding level at what we were last year's motion.
Except for Black Hills Council, local governments.
So, keeping it fairly simple.
Right, because...
Theirs is going up to seventeen.
Who's going? Oh, no, sorry.
If I get a second, I gotta...
Yep, go ahead.
Yeah, I second it, and, and the Black Hills Council is the first one.
Um, well, and actually, every year.
It's a while.
So, Black Hills Council, can, is that a, that's a contracted item, I mean, essentially, can that move into the commission budget? 'Cause that's technically professional services.
Yeah, I don't know why it's ever been outside, right?
Yeah, so, yeah, there's a couple of components of that. Uh, Black Hills Council, local governments is actually a governmental agency that provides services. If we're members, they'll provide us services to a certain level, and then, but if we, like, you know, when we do our comp plan and stuff, they do that under contract.
But...
But I agree. I mean, it makes sense that, I'm not sure, out, these outside agencies are, these are generally not for things for relation, ongoing relationships with the county. It probably makes some sense at some point to make that up.
I can remove it from this list moving forward.
Yeah, next, maybe twenty-six, yeah, maybe.
Yep, yeah.
Seems...
We used to classify this as non-mandated funding, which I almost think is, is a better terminology, because by statute, we don't have to fund any of it.
Yeah, we just, like, with Black Hills Council, we just wouldn't get the services.
Right.
Like, we don't have to hire this guy, but he's gonna pay for it. It's not mandatory.
Seems like that might be a contract, like, it rolls into commission contract, because that's who's directing them to do it.
So, I, I will just, I made a note here to notify Jennifer Seetsma that she will not need to make a presentation next year. She just needs to send us a bill.
Well, she might need to come update the commission at some point in time.
I think it's still, I mean, I think she's still gotta do it, 'cause we don't want that one.
But not, not necess, and not necessarily at budget time, but it'd be good to have her come.
Present that and update?
Present, update the commission different, various time.
Okay.
Time or two, maybe, however, whatever's necessary.
Not two.
Okay, once, half, I don't...
Talbot and I see her.
I don't care.
It's a murky discussion.
Okay, we got, we do have a motion and second on the floor to approve outside agency funding at the level we did in twenty-four, all the same groups, all the same amounts at the level we were at in twenty-four.
Increasing Black Hills Council.
Increasing Black Hills Council.
And by the way, they do things for more governmental agents.
Looking for a second?
Uh, we have a second. I have a motion and second on the floor. I'm, I'm looking for more discussion to this motion. I'm not seeing any, so therefore, all those in favor, say hi.
Hi.
Oh, same sign. Motion carries. So, requests from the Fair Board, that's just put on there twice. Uh, I don't, we don't think we're ready to put that into this year's budget, so let's move down to, uh, um, let's, let's move down to means of finance and the budget, the actual budget. Um, I have a couple things that Rich and I did visit about on this. First of all, revenue, we talked about last time I talked to Robin, our, uh, interest income, uh, she thought should be moved down forty percent. We, we had that previously at six hundred thousand. I said, well, it'd be three sixty. We moved it to four hundred thousand. If that's, if that's okay with everybody.
Yeah, because we're spending a lot of that money next year.
Yes, so it's, we moved that, the revenue on that to four hundred thousand. Rich and I have visited a little bit in all of our moving to some assignment stuff. It would make sense to me, and I guess speak up if you disagree, on the highways budget, if we would take our, uh, Bridge Improvement Grant funds and assign that versus budgeting it every year. The reason is, is because it doesn't happen. It happens about half the time, even if that, so it would almost make sense to assign it every single year versus just sit and put it on the budget and not spend it. So, if that's okay with the board, we're gonna move that over to assignment, and off of that, that was two hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Yes.
Um, what else was there, Rhea? I would like to, I think the highway fund actually is going to end up with about, uh, to our calculations, about a hundred and twenty-nine, I don't know, twenty-nine-six something, a hundred and twenty-nine thousand dollars. I think we can apply a hundred thousand dollars of that cash to, to cash applied within that, so that'd be a hundred thousand less out of general, is what else, uh, I would do, is what else I would suggest doing on this budget. Um, there was a, uh, there was also Tony and Rhea spent a good part of Friday, and they were able to get, but between the department heads, Tony went around, talked to all the department heads, so we were able to take forty-two thousand and some change off of software budgets. There's different numbers from last time, is where I'm going over, that, that we, that you guys have all seen. Is there anything else that we had discussed?
That's what I recall, but on a side note, if I may add, that Tony has suggested that we actually create a computer item in and of itself, separating it from software for ease of tracking in the future, so we were gonna run that past the commission to see if that had your blessing.
So, that'd be in everybody's individual budget, they'd have a software item and a computer item.
Yes, sir.
It was confusing last time to get that pulled apart, where we looked at the cost of computers versus the...
And Tony's went around and talked to all the department heads, to my knowledge, and kinda taken this under his wings. We'll keep all the software stuff within each department's budget, but Tony's gonna kinda lead us and help us out with that, talk into the department heads, and I think it's gonna be a better deal, because then everyone's gonna understand what they need. Is there any questions to those items that I mentioned that, uh, like I said, I'm, I'm suggesting with the budget? Very few from last time, mainly, it's gonna be, I think we'll need a couple minutes to do some figuring, oh, Rhea, on this, so.
So, on the means of finance, Rhea, this is the budget without our assignments, is that correct?
That's correct.
So, um, if we take the two hundred and fifty thousand out, or our current budget is twenty-three million one... Thirty-five thousand-ish or something. So...
Boo. We haven't made a dec, have we made a decision on growth in CPI?
Uh, not, not one hundred percent, no.
Yeah.
Uh, we've had the same number in front of us, uh, the whole time. Uh, if you'd like to bring that up, down, it's up to you, what, what, uh, Commissioner Creed, uh, Robin Schreick and Rhea and I discussed revenue one day, that was sometime this summer. We just, we just came up with the best guess. Um, what you guys are saying is taking all of the CPI off of the, the highway, which is, you, can you pull those numbers up for you, please?
Let me pull this up for you.
All of it off of library. Um, two-point-three was our growth on the general. Uh, there was two-point... Better not say, two-point, uh, one and three is what we pulled off of general. But I guess Rhea's gonna bring that up, so we'll have to...
So, I don't know, if you, if you run the numbers, what's kinda where we're at of the budget right now? The forty percent, we don't have to worry about until we make, until we pay those one time in the year, and then see where we're at.
The forty percent doesn't actually, pay is a loose word, because it, we don't have to pay, we have to assign it. So, we have to assign that by December, sometime in December. I'm not exactly sure if that's the thirty-first, the fifteenth. Yeah, so I'm assuming there's, what, the way I understand this, our second meeting in December, we will make those assignments. Now, that doesn't mean, uh, that we're going to go through with all those projects, but we have to make assignment to get us under forty percent. No, we don't have to budget. But you, but we don't have to do, yeah, and we don't have to even do that now.
Right.
What has happened is Rhea has made a list of all the things that were on the budget that we took off, so we'll take a look at that in December. You're, yeah, you're right, we don't have to budget, we, we have to assign some money for, because we, we essentially have saved too much money.
Well, we saved it. No, I, 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 I don't like to use that term in our knowledge. It's the federal money that came to us that we haven't spent waiting for one-time expenditures.
And that's a better way of putting it. I don't disagree, but, hey, we have more money in the bank. We have over forty percent of our, of our general budget in the bank. That's, that's the bottom line.
So, with, after going through the, you know, approving the, the, uh, cost of living for employees and, you know, the figures we put together, how much over, how much budget over what are projected revenues?
If we would leave that and everything that I just mentioned just a bit, bit ago, it'd all go through, uh, and we would leave the growth in CPI alone, the, the number we've been seeing, which is twelve-one-oh-eight for revenue out of, out of the property taxes for the general, that would, we'd have to apply one million... One million thirty-five thousand, six hundred and fifty-three dollars in cash to our general budget. And I wanna check those figures real quick before we go any further, but, but with that said, that's, that's what a rough calculation.
Then we have to add the five percent?
No, that's already, that's included in everything. That's, 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 that's exactly what it'd be. That's figuring the pipe.
Okay, and that is taking what for CPI?
That is taking...
Right here, Doreen, on your screen.
That is taking the two-point-four-three for growth. That is taking the two-point-one bank we have for twenty-two, and the three percent bank. Leaving the three percent for twenty-two.
Okay, so we're only taking bank CPI, we're not, and we're still banking.
Still banking three percent on the general. County road and bridge, we're taking everything.
We're taking everything. Yeah, 'cause we need it.
And the library, we're taking everything.
Yeah.
The general, we're gonna bank, we're, this proposal is saying we're gonna keep three percent banked.
We're not taking all the tax increases that are allowed by state government.
Most counties are at this point.
Well, I remember when I was at a county convention, and they asked everybody to raise their hand, those counties that were not taking everything allowed. And everybody else kept their hand down but me, Johnny.
So, that's, like I said, I, is there something you'd like to change to some of the bank, to the growth, Ted, or anybody?
No.
But, go ahead.
I was gonna say, one percent CPI is about a hundred thousand dollars.
Not much. I did...
Oh, yeah, three percent amounts to, three percent of our general amounts.
So, kinda what I was wondering if...
Will you please talk in your mics? Thank you.
Kinda what I was wondering is, if, um, what this budget would do to our mill levy?
If you give me a few minutes, Grace, I will run down, and I will run that.
Okay.
I wanna add, we made more money on interest than we made on, than we can make on CPI in the last year.
If the commission is, is good with this, let's take about a fifteen-minute break. Rhea, is that gonna cover the time to find the levy and to make sure these calculations are correct?
It used, it used to take at least a half hour.
So, we can take a half an hour.
I don't believe it will take us a half...
I think it's fifteen. I think it's fifteen. We, we put a lot of these numbers in over the weekend.
Are, are there any other numbers that we need to include, or we're good with the numbers so far? Uh, we're just finalizing?
Uh, to my knowledge, no, and I'm probably gonna wake up in the night, as I've done a lot here lately thinking of numbers, but there's probably something that, that, that we missed, but I can't think of. We've looked under about every rock. I think, Rhea?
Tried to look under every rock we can think of.
So, that's, I think we're good.
I mean, I'm, I'm good, I...
Okay.
Well, we can get the levy figure to make sure means of finance is a hundred percent spot-on, and we'll be back in fifteen minutes or so, twenty, whatever.
That's.
You should all have in front of you a nice colored, uh, means of finance sheet. Rhea, could you pull that up on the screen as well, please?
Yes. See if I have access to that folder here.
And all, I just confirmed with HR that, yeah, all the, this is budgeting all cost of living for all employees, doesn't mean we'd have to give at some point in time to elected officials, but it is budgeting for it. Yeah, that makes, so it is.
It is budgeting for it, but we have to prove the revenue.
Absolutely, but we have, yeah, so today we have to budget, and that's, it is including that, all.
So, the three ten?
Ant- anticipated budget increase for all, everybody, all elected officials. Not enough. I guess you're it.
About a five-twenty-five.
Probably gotta be less than that because he's on the plane.
Yeah.
Now, there was a few, but it was an exaggeration, but there was a moment or two that, I'd see numbers in my sleep. We don't want to know.
Thank goodness.
(laughing).
All growth?
Uh.
All CPI?
That's correct, yes. All the growth and all the CPI, I, yeah, except, except we'll have three percent bank next year. Yeah.
No, it's not.
All the growth and all the CPI, yeah. Except, except we'll have 3% bank next year. Yeah.
No, it's not. Actually, the general levy last year was 3.168 versus 3.29 this year.
So it goes up nine cents.
That was-
Yes. Actually, it would be 13 cents. 13 cents, not quite. At 13.1 cents.
Yep.
Correct.
What's, what's that?
You gotta add them all up.
Which, which one? Which one?
Okay.
You gotta, to get our total budget.
I actually, yeah, I've seen it vary by county. Typically, counties report their general budget.
Add all this.
But you add it for your total budget, yes, but the-
The number that we would normally see would be-
Yeah, adding all that together, but that's what you have to report this year.
Okay.
So it's, I got 23 million.
Okay.
Which I think is-
Yeah.
That's our-
Capital projects.
Capital projects.
Perce-, perceive a need, Tarien?
Yeah, I, I, I-
No, and I think we're, so I think we're a lot closer this time than we were last time. So we're not gonna have that big jump like we did on the last time that we did this.
It's the difference of a resolution.
Right. I, I think that our contingency should be okay.
Any other questions, comments to this?
So, just for clarification, we, we have our budget and then we're going to do assignments at the end of the year on top of the, this budget that we-
Yeah, Taria just has in front of you, there's this list of assignments. Um, and actually, we will look at each of these items, there may be more. Um, may be some others that, maybe some of these we don't feel like we need on, maybe some that we wanna add. But essentially, what I perceive doing here is taking a look at what is in our general fund account and saying we have, right now, it's somewhere around six and million probably that, that, that needs to be assigned or found a home for. Um, and then we'll, we'll take a look at these projects. And I don't know if we have to have this signed on the 31st of December, when that is, but we need to look at that date. And so if it's the first or second meeting is what I'm getting at in December when this is, not exactly sure.
If I remember-
Sometime in December.
If I may, Mr. Chair, if I remember correctly, Al said as long as we put it in our minutes before the end of the year, so when they're doing their next audit, they can look back and see that.
Yeah. He said that it's ideal to not wait as long as you can, simply because, one, you'll know where your general fund dollars are. Obviously, we need to know that. And then, and then you'll, you can, you can assign them anytime, but it'd be- Any other questions, comments? Got that evil look in your eye. That's your last look? It's everything, okay. Uh, if not, could I get a motion to, could I get, entertain a motion to pass this means of finance?
Is-
A resolution, I've got?
Yeah.
Is the means of finance that's on, um, or docs the current, it's not the current one, the one that we're-
The current one is what is in front of you.
Because we discussed items, uh, today was the first time we discussed items such as the health insurance and the COLAs and that revenue change I said I made, things like that, that is on board doc, that's not on board doc.
I was just making sure.
Yep.
Make a motion to approve the means of finance, um, that- Just hand it out with the changes last hour. That works.
Can you display the means of finance?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you, Talbot.
We had a 200,000 miscellaneous revenue is what, what we're looking at as the handout.
We took off 200,000.
Oh, well, oh, yeah, excuse me, took off 200,000 miscellaneous.
That was out of interest income.
And then, part of the problem, though, where did we add, though?
We, we took out of the, the County Road and Bridge Fund, we took out the, the 250,000, the bridge improvement grant, and we're gonna sign that, we're planning on assigning that. Um, so that's gonna take off of your highway, which is going to take up in the end of your general.
Yeah, but I'm, okay, I'm looking at my general fund numbers.
We added the COLAs.
Looking to see what's different between what's posted.
That's a diff, that's the issue.
Yep.
Okay, so we re- As we say, okay, so we up the cash applied. By the, that's the COLA number, the cash applied. Well, 'cause the only concern I've got is- Oh, well, it was just handed out to us.
No, I'm fine, that's fine.
I'm just trying to figure out what we moved around. So are those, are those only in the general fund, those the only two lines that were modified?
The two lines modified, obviously, the cash applied, which, uh, the, the miscellaneous revenue. Um, essentially, yes, what I can see.
That would be correct.
General.
Yeah, but then we also made edits to the county bridge and road.
S was going into there.
Use the other financing source.
911 service change.
And we also added 100,000, I just, we added 350 for the good and county road and bridge.
911 change.
911 change, shouldn't have.
Went from 875 to 911.
Why was that, Ria?
Uh, we changed 911 because of the, because of the change in-
Oh, we did, sorry, revenue, that's right. It was, it was more accurate to go, because we'd already did that, but it, the current, Pat probably knows, is the, the, we were getting about $21,000 a month and it's currently about 31,000 is where we're at now, after the first September, that play, that took place by July. So we, we-
Emergency management.
That's because we, I, we took out a, a proposed halftime employee.
Well, it didn't, yeah, but it, I don't know why that one changed $2,000. Not even 2,000, I'm not sure why. Oh, other financing sources, 'cause there was more money in the decline. I'm not exactly sure what.
I don't care. I'm not supposed to say, no, I'm adopting what I'm looking at, or-
We wanna go back through the departments and go scour that, that's fine with me, too.
Well, no, I'm just, no, I'm, uh, difficulty.
Mm-hmm, I understand, that's, I don't know, I don't know how to, which-
Yeah, I mean, if this, if we can attach this to the board docs and say this is the updated one, I think that's the way to do it.
I- Go ahead.
Well, if we pass, we could, we can move, we can print this.
But it, it would be good to have it on the-
What I could do is actually attach this with a note that says, added to board docs after approval on 9/24.
But I, I think that's, that's the clear way for everybody else to be able to see it, and for us to go back and find it, it's-
It has to be shown, I agree, for the record.
So do we need a budget for one of those?
Tony's ordering it. I believe it's about $210.
Well, how would you like to make that motion, if you'd like?
So I already did make that motion. Oh, I think you're waiting for it.
I'm waiting for a second.
Uh, my motion was to adopt the means of finance that was provided by Ria, that we made.
And to print and to get this into board.
And to, to add this to board docs. We've, it's always been in there, um, but we usually-
That summary sheet.
Do I have, do I have a second?
For a second, I appreciate it.
There. If you go on.
Yeah, and it's always been in there, it's just a-
Yeah, no, I know, you can find it.
The detail is just a different detail.
Almost happened.
For funding, yes.
Yeah. I'm waiting for them to be ready.
Well, and I, so I think it, I think that's probably true, we took out, you know, quite a little in the highway department, 'cause we moved that to the one time.
Yeah, we also-
Um, not, not just the 3 million.
So then, when we took that out, then our 5% did-
Out of what?
Well, last year, when we had all those, we had, the highway was more, it seemed like we pa-, you know, what we were gonna spend was about 24 or 25 million.
There's, there's, I can answer.
Then we, then we put on 5% that put it up to 28.
Yep, but you, the statute only requires you to add the 5%, any, everything you have levied. You don't have to add 5% everything. What we did last year was add 5% to everything.
Yeah, yeah.
This year, it's just on the levy portion.
It's just on the levied portion.
Yeah, I see that, I understand that.
Okay.
But it really made a difference.
Yeah, it makes, well, it also made a difference, the biggest difference is, uh, we, are you guys ready?
Oh.
Yeah, go ahead.
Um, motion to approve the means of finance as provided after 9/24 changes and to add current documents, um, in board docs for future reference. Motion by Leggett, second by-
Isorick.
I think you need to specify.
We can just print that, then. We can just print this, this is what's passed.
So include in the minutes, the funding appropriations for each fund.
The other difference Ted, I've got a motion, second discussion to this motion. Just pointing out, Commissioner Seaman asked, there's a couple differences. One big difference that I, I found that, um, for many years, the county has been budgeting and operating transfers out at $4,108,500. Why that, I don't have a clue where that number came from. Um, that is typically under your other financing sources under this. You've never spent that. It was typically like, a lot of times, 2 million, what we found, Ria. So you're paying a 5% on that as well. So that's down around 3, what is our operating transfers out now, it's 3-
2.9.
2.9.
Oh.
That's a million off of that budget, basically, that you guys were just, I shouldn't say you guys, the commission for a long time was using that number.
And since our budget looks smaller, then that's why the mill levy went up a little bit. Would've had a higher budget than the mill levy, would've went down a little bit.
Backwards.
What?
Backwards.
Other way around?
Okay, so motion is second to approve this means of finance, which will be printed in the minutes. Uh, any other discussion to that motion? Or questions?
Talbot, you seconded for discussion.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Didn't even-
No.
That's why I'm hanging on this one.
Look, I, I wanna pass it, I just wanna make sure that we all-
I'm sorry, I can't hear you, Talbot. I had too much rock music as a child, apparently.
Don't feel bad, I couldn't hear him either.
I said that, uh, uh, I just, I just wanna make sure we do it right.
I would like nothing more than that.
Yeah, um- Oh, there's my, extended my discussion again. Yeah.
What would you, would you wish we would have a spreadsheet on?
Yeah, I just, I get nervous 'cause we have a spreadsheet on that we're not adopting, we're just, we're gonna adopt a different spreadsheet, that's not really been listed, but not detailed out.
Uh, could you print that off and we can show where these numbers are?
Well, I think one of the, maybe, maybe the easiest way to do it is incorporate within the motion, the total appropriation numbers for- Well, I think one of the, maybe, maybe the easiest way to do it is incorporate within the motion, the total appropriation numbers for each.
So, if I were to...
Yeah, I just, I don't wanna get in an argument with somebody down the line that we didn't properly appropriate. The, the only thing, thing going about it is the gen- the numbers for the... Were, were adding more cash applied, so actually, the tax numbers are higher under what, what was posted versus what we're passing. So I'm kinda struggling to say, well... Went the opposite way.
From the last time that was posted. And that was essentially up.
Yeah, that, that...
Is what brought that up. The cash applied in the county, that, there's gonna be money left over in that fund.
Trying to show you right here, if we go down to this appropriations tab. Is that what your question is, Talbot?
No, well, yeah. So, it's just my concern that... Look, I have no question, but you can modify what's posted. And you can, but make, do that by motion. I'm, I'm just a little nervous to say... We're gonna adopt what's sitting in front of me without identifying what's sitting in front of me. So, that's my... Yeah, it have, just been a couple of numbers changed, I'd be like, not a problem. Um, just name out the numbers, but we've got several columns.
I'll redo my motion. Um, I'll, I'll make a motion to adopt the means of finance, um, with general fund being fifteen million two hundred sixty-six thousand three hundred and seventy-eight. County road and bridge fund, uh, at...
Oops, sorry.
That's the wrong number.
Yeah, you're giving the wrong number.
I'm giving the wrong numbers.
You're giving the numbers on the...
The, the general fund being fifteen million two hundred eighty-one thousand four hundred and fifty. Uh, county road and bridge fund, uh, total appropriations of six million nine hundred and eighty-three thousand six hundred and forty-eight. Drug abuse fund at four thousand. Nine one one service fund of nine hundred and one thousand seven hundred and thirty-eight. The public library fund at fifty-four thousand seven hundred. Emergency management fund at sixty-two thousand seven hundred and one. The domestic abuse fund at nine thousand. The twenty-four seven sobriety fund at eighty-eight thousand five hundred and nine.
We have no appropriations.
No appropriations for modernization.
And then if, I think you, we still want this printed.
Still do, but, uh, it's in the motion then.
Yes.
Yeah.
And... And the, I, we still wanna include that this should be printed within the minutes, it means the finances, is that correct, Rich?
Yeah, I, I think, I think identifying those in that, I think we still should have that available.
A motion.
I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second on the floor. Um, which, uh, to pass this means of finance with all the appropriations in, in each column identified. Well, as to print this means of finance within our minutes. Any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign, motion carries. Uh, brings us down to the annual budget res- resolution. Which needs to be signed by all commissioners if passed, uh, with, uh, any questions, comments on this resolution. This is also going to be, no, this won't be any different.
So...
It is different, yes. Which it's... Yeah, mine's blank online.
So we're, we're, um...
That's cause we didn't have any final, we hadn't...
Uh, yeah, yeah, you're right.
Yeah, county road and bridge, we're not doing any levy for that.
No, no. It's blank online, it's, it's the sheet in front of us.
Oh yeah, it's blank online.
It's blank on...
It's three hundred and six. It's blank on this sheet, too.
It's down at the bottom, Talbot.
On the bottom, okay. Secondary, okay. It should be county road and bridge.
Because it's not limited.
It'd be county road and bridge. That's what, what the fund listed as.
County road and bridge is a limited fund.
Okay.
Oh, so we're capped in that fund already?
It's limited, it can only be used for certain things.
Road.
We are, we have a, you, the commission made a choice several years ago to go to secondary roads that is not limited funds. Not restricted to just that use.
The levy.
Yes. The tax dollars collected are not limited to just certain things.
But it always goes into county road and bridge.
Yes.
Cause that would have, there would be what it's...
And I've, maybe Doreen has a better way of saying what I just said.
Other discussion and/or action to this resolution?
I will make a motion to, um, approve the budget resolution with the following numbers. Uh, general county purposes of twelve million one hundred and eight dollars and s- one hundred and eight, six hundred and sixty-three dollars. Uh, that puts a levy of three point two nine. The outside limited levy at the same number, with a, at twelve million one hundred and eight thousand six hundred and sixty-three. That levy number is three point two eight five, which is the same number, it's just a different rounding. Um, the limited and unlimited levy so- subtotal being twelve million one hundred and eight thousand six hundred and sixty-three dollars. Uh, the levy number being three point two eight five. Secondary road, um, dollars being three hundred and sixty-four thousand eight hundred and fifty-one, with a point two three three levy. The public library, uh, dollars being forty thousand six hundred and nine, with a levy of point zero one five. Uh, total taxes levied by the county is twelve million five hundred and fourteen thousand one hundred and twenty-three dollars, with a levy of three point five three three.
Second.
Motion and second to, uh, pass this resolution with the numbers that the...
Mr. Chair, may I say that the first line that Rich said has, is only two decimals, three point two nine should be a three point two eight five? I think I just need to...
Okay.
That fine to correct in your motion?
I will, uh...
Thank you.
End my motion.
Yes, uh, I would think we'd wanna print this as well, this, this resolution.
Yes.
We have to print the resolution.
Yes.
Uh, motion second on the floor to pass this resolution. Any more discussion to that motion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries, and, uh, all commissioners will have to sign this resolution.
We'll need to sign the one that says two eight five instead of...
Yes. And I have it on my computer downstairs, so I can't...
Okay.
It's read-only up here, so let me go reprint that and bring it up.
Okay.
Uh, which brings us, uh, we've, uh...
Is that finished, and so it brings us to executive session?
Executive session, yes.
All right. Um... So, I'll make a motion. To go into executive session for contract and personnel.
I have a motion, I don't have a second.
I will second.
I have a motion and second on the floor to go into executive session for contract and personnel, you didn't say legal, did you? Uh, any discussion to that motion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries.
Sup, Nathan? Can I get a signature? Oh, oh, yeah. Ted's already signed it, he's Johnny on the spot.
Same place, I just didn't know.
So, while we were talking, while I was like, trying to make conversation. I wish, wish I was a rich rancher.
I was out on our road all the time. Sheep, somebody smoked two sheep. Bad deal. It tastes like smoked salmon. Bad deal, though.
motion of second.
motion of second, come out of Zach. Any discussion to that motion? Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oh, same sign. Motion carries. We've completed our business and there being nothing else on the agenda, we all declare us adjourned.